Call to order this meeting of the City Council Land Use Committee for Wednesday, March 10th, 2021. And we have one item on our agenda. No, we have two items on our agenda. Ordinance 2107, to amend the city zoning maps by amending the district ordinance for Thompson PUD regarding 300 West Hillside Drive. And then we have ordinance 2108, to amend the zoning maps by rezoning 87 acres from planned unit development to mixed-use corridor in regard to 3100 West Fullerton Pike. So I believe we have Mr. Eric Groelik from the Planning and Transportation Department here to present both items. So, Mr. Groelik, as soon as you're ready with ordinance 2107, you can go right ahead.
Great. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. I just like to have an acknowledgement there that something is working in this world. So as you mentioned, this is a request from the McDole Business Center to amend a parcel within the Thompson PUD to allow for redevelopment of this property. It is located at 300 West Hillside Drive. So this is, this property has been developed with a warehouse, a large 100,000 square foot warehouse approximately. The northern one-third of that warehouse contains Storage Express. The southern two-thirds of the warehouse occupies predominantly the entire property as well as a small parking lot on the south side. And then it also encompasses a small lot that is on the south side of Hillside Drive. That's about .8 acres and currently contains just a surface parking lot. So the petitioner is requesting to amend the Thompson PUD for this parcel to allow for the site to be redeveloped with several new buildings. This would include four townhome buildings on the north side of the site, two mixed-use buildings on the south side of the site, and then another building on the south side of Hillside Drive that would contain two floors of parking with apartments above. So just kind of stepping through the overall petition, as I mentioned, the northern four buildings would be townhomes. These would have 19 units in them with a maximum of four bedrooms each, with 29 surface parking spaces that are on the west side of the site. These buildings would be three stories in height. One of the main issues that we've kind of discussed with those particular buildings is the architecture, and I'll go through some renderings in just a minute or two, kind of showing how those will interact and look from the Switchyard Park. These four buildings will have several entrances or sidewalk connections to the Switchyard Park that runs along the entire east property line. As I mentioned, there would be a surface parking lot on the west side of the site that would kind of buffer these buildings between the McDole neighborhood, the one and two-story structures just to the west of that. That parking area, that drive would connect the Hillside Drive to the south. And they are showing that stubbing to the north property line. We acknowledge that that stubs into the existing Storage Express warehouse, but the hopes with that extension is that when that warehouse to the north possibly redevelops sometime in the future, that that extension could be extended all the way through to Grimes Lane to the north. So they are showing that stubbing for that possible future extension opportunity. There's a roundabout that is shown kind of in the center of the site. The reason for that roundabout is actually to facilitate emergency vehicle access. Emergency vehicles, specifically fire trucks, can't go more than, I believe, 300 feet or so into a site without a turnaround. So that roundabout allows for traffic, fire trucks, in order to be able to navigate and exit the site should they have to enter in the parking area. So moving south, Building 2, as they've labeled it, is a five-story building that would have a ground floor commercial component as well as apartments above it with some parking within the building. That building would have approximately 32 units, 56 bedrooms, and 16 of the parking spaces that are on that surface parking area would be designated for that building. So that would have approximately 0.58 parking ratio to take into account the spaces within the building as well as the surface spaces. Just to the south of that is another mixed-use building. Again, this would be some ground floor commercial, some parking within the building itself with residences above. That would have 30 units with 54 bedrooms in that with the parking spaces that are on site and within the building. They're looking at about a .6 parking ratio for that building as well. So to the south, I mentioned another building. This would be, or this was approved as a five-story building with the requirement that the west half of the building be stepped back 15 feet. So basically, it was approved as a four-story building along the McDole neighborhood to the west with a requirement that the fifth story be stepped back 15 feet to allow for a maximum five-story building 65-foot height. So the bottom two floors of that building would be used for parking, not just for this building or the residences here, but also to fulfill certain parking arrangements, lease agreements that the petitioner has made with some adjacent property owners. So some of the parking within this building will be used for other uses adjacent to this site. So as part of the redevelopment of this, you know, certainly a lot of the pedestrian connections that we wanted to see revolved around connecting this site to the Switchyard Park, which runs along the entire east property line of this site, but also was very important to connect this site to Rogers Street to the west. So the petitioner will be incorporating a sidewalk connection from this property all the way to Rogers Street to the west. This would incorporate a tree plot and a five-foot sidewalk along the north side of Hillside Drive. The right-of-way along Hillside Drive is very tight, so we were only able to really kind of facilitate a sidewalk along one side of Hillside Drive, and that required some ingenuity as well as there is a lot of utility poles and utility infrastructure within the right-of-way along Hillside Drive, but we were able to get a sidewalk all the way from this side to Rogers Street, which is certainly a significant achievement. So I just kind of stepped through some renderings of the site and then the specific buildings. So this is a rendering showing this site, which you can see in kind of the red box here in relation to the Switchyard Park that runs along the east side of this property. You know, you can see in this rendering here to the north, the Storage Express building to the north, and then to the south, the Crosley Warehouse. So this is another rendering, again, showing the perspective buildings as well as the Switchyard Park to the east. So in kind of the center of the screen, you can see some of the buildings associated with the Switchyard Park. And then on the kind of right side of the screen, you can see the proposed buildings here. The townhomes are in the center of the screen, just to the center and right. And then moving to the right, you've got the mixed-use buildings as you kind of look to the right, looking south. So this is another rendering, again, looking west. So you can see the Switchyard Park in the foreground here with the petitioner's proposal kind of in the center of the screen. On the right side of the screen, you've got the Storage Express Warehouse, the four townhomes, two mixed-use buildings, and then on the left side, kind of the south side of the site, you've got the mixed-use building and then the Crosley Warehouse to the south of this. So this is also a good kind of rendering to see some of the one- and two-story structures in the McDole neighborhood that are in the background. So the site design, you know, as I kind of mentioned with the townhomes, has the buildings along the Switchyard Park, a large area of approximately 70, 80 feet almost that kind of buffers those buildings between this project and the McDole neighborhood. The parking areas that they're showing along here helps create a 60-foot buffer. There's also a buffer yard requirement that's 14 feet deep that they will be planting with landscaping to help buffer the parking spaces from their neighborhoods to the west. So the parking area and the buffer yard helps accomplish a pretty big spatial distance between these buildings and neighborhood. That helps accomplish a lot of buffering just from uses and impact, but also the view of these taller buildings from those one-story structures on the McDole neighborhood. So that lack of kind of a buffer was something that came into play with Building 7, which is on the south side of Hillside Drive. Because there was not, that was not that large parking area and buffer yard that was available, we were more concerned with the building height of Building 7 along the structures to the west. Granted, the buildings that are to the west of this are only two, and they're two-story structures, but we were concerned with the impact of the massing of Building 7 against those residences to the west, which is why we were required the step back for that fifth story to help break up the massing along the buildings to the west of this. So I'll kind of step through a little bit more of the renderings of the proposed buildings. So this, on the left side of the screen, in the kind of the center to the left, is the proposed Building 7. So this would have apartments on the upper three floors, the parking garage on the bottom two floors. So one important aspect about this site is there is a 30-foot easement that runs along the east side of this site in favor of the Crosley Warehouse to the south of that. So that's why you see a large paved patio area that is to the right side of that building. That is to facilitate access to the Crosley Warehouse. So while that easement is there, you know, an important thing that I need to point out and that we mentioned, I think, with the Plan Commission approval, is the petitioner would need to have a final plan approval for that drive cut, and there may be a problem issuing that approval for the drive cut, given where the entrance is for the parking garage within Building 7. So we're not dealing with that aspect now, and that detail might change later with the final design of the parking garage to accomplish both of those access issues. But they are showing that as paved because it is possible to facilitate access to the south, that that could be entirely paved. So the petitioner for that Building 7, they are requesting a minimum 20% landscaped area with a maximum 80%. So a minimum of that site would be landscaped. While this particular rendering doesn't show that, doesn't give that appearance as it appears to be 100%, the district ordinance that governs that lot would require a minimum 25, 20% of the lot to be landscaped. So moving north, you can see the next mixed-use building. Petitors have kind of carved out a circle within that building with a plaza area, so that faces Hillside Drive and the Switchyard Park. So the ground floor of that building would be the commercial space, and then you can see the four floors of apartments that would be above that. So there is a kind of a closer rendering of that building. So you can see kind of the pedestrian entrance along the east side of the building. The petitioner is showing a canopy as well as modulation and recesses, change in building height to kind of break up the look. They've included balconies along the residential units in order to give a nice interaction between those residences and Switchyard Park. Again, the building to the north of that as well, they've got some patios carved out at the corners of the building to provide some pedestrian orientation along the building as well as canopies and kind of a center column. So it was very important to staff as well as the Plan Commission of how these buildings, all of these buildings, interacted with the Switchyard Park, and that was an area that we spent a lot of time discussing and reviewing, not just with the mixed-use buildings, but also with the townhome buildings that are on the north side of the site. So the petitioner has oriented all of the end cap units of those buildings to have fronts facing the Beeline Trail. They've got recessed entries with canopies, perspective patios that are shown on the ground floor, patios on the second or the third floor units as well. Once again, all just to try to promote interaction with the trail, get as many eyes on the trail as possible for security purposes, as well as just to provide, you know, a great amenity and incentive for folks that are living there to get out and enjoy the view of the Switchyard Park that the city recently spent a substantial amount of money improving. So again, these are just kind of a ground floor kind of look of the buildings from the Switchyard Park. So you can see the townhomes on the right side of the screen, and then mixed-use buildings go on the left side of the screen there. So these are the townhome buildings as well. You can kind of see the ground level view of this, the patios, the recessed entries, the balconies on the upper floor. You know, these are all elements that were, staff felt was important to incorporate in order to try to improve the look of these buildings from the Switchyard Park. So with that, the Plan Commission did recommend forwarding this to the Collin Council with a positive recommendation and the conditions that are listed on the screen here. You know, I'll certainly just take a minute to point out that the buildings within the area, within this development, would be LEED certified. The townhome buildings on the north end of the site would be developed to the residential LEED certification, and then the two mixed-use buildings to the south would be designed to the LEED Silver Certification. The petitioner is also proposing to set aside 15% of all of the units within this project to meet the affordability guidelines that are outlined in the UVO. So those are certainly very substantial elements to this project as well that I want to make sure to point out. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garlick. I wonder if you could unshare your screen for, just for now, so I can see my colleagues better. I had a, before I go to colleagues for question, I, there's an important clarification I just wanted to have, and that is that in the conditions for approval that you just had on the screen and that were also listed at the end of your memo in our packet, number two says that the district ordinance shall be amended to allow maximum 80% impervious surface, minimum 20% landscape area for the lot with Building 7, and a maximum height shall be limited to four stories or 50 feet. But in the text of your memo, it says 65 feet, but step back on the, on the west side of the building. So I'm wondering which is the actual height limit?
Yes, so the, the height limit for the building was approved at 65 feet with the requirement that the, the fifth story along the west side be stepped back 15 feet. So the petitioner amended their district ordinance accordingly. So in the, in the packet, you should have the district ordinance labeled Thompson Track E, PUD Amendment Zoning Rules, Revision 3, 11721. That reflects the conditions of approval that the Plan Commission wrote regarding the building height, the required step back, and the impervious surface coverage.
Okay, but do you understand why I'm confused? Because in your memo, the, the conditions for approval say 50 feet.
Yes, because that was, that was the condition as we initially wrote it. I should have revised that to reflect the condition that got modified from the Plan Commission. I apologize.
Okay, just so as we're clear. All right.
Order.
Yes.
Can we hear from the petitioner?
Yes, I was just getting to that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder. Would the petitioner like to make a statement or a brief presentation? Who do we have here from the petitioner? Mr. Doug Bruce was there at Plan Commission. Do I see him here?
Hello? Yes, I saw Doug Bruce and Tom and Jeff Faneau should be the petitioner's representatives.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, I believe Doug Bruce is unmuted now, or can I unmute himself?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lacy.
Yeah. Do you have me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mr. Bruce.
Okay, good. Yes, um, thank you. I think Eric did a good job of presenting the, the project we've worked on for quite some time. I think there's some, you know, we've made quite a few changes as we've, as we have worked with the mayor's office and the planning department on what they wish to see here. It was our goal to try to do something that was along the park that replaced at least our part of the, the building. You know, we've had no real discussions with, with Mr. Shreve on his portion of the building. So again, the city, the planning department wanted us to look at a future connection. We proposed a project that was a pretty, I'll say, a medium density. The city had had a plan put together that wasn't released, that had showed quite high density and a few parking garages on this site. And then they, but before that, they had a plan that had single-family homes on this site. So it was quite the discussion on getting to this point. We initially had come forward to planning with single-family homes and trying to extend some roads here, but again, the only access we have is on Hillside Drive to the south, so it's a very long, narrow site, and some way or another, we've got to provide fire department access, no matter what the project is, whether it's single-family or a mixed-use higher density. So as we moved down the road with it, it became pretty evident that to go forward, we were going to need some sort of medium density. And so we tried to come in with something that had like, for instance, the townhomes. These are homes that are for sale. While they're not necessarily single-family detached homes, they are a more affordable home than a detached home. I think the worry initially was that if we did single-family homes here, that they would end up being half a million-dollar houses like we have further north on the trail, I'd say closer to Cardinal Spirit. So there was a fear from, from the administration that this wasn't just a place for rich people to live. I think that was kind of the, the quote that was given to us. So townhomes are away, again, we've got 19 units in four buildings that are less expensive to build, less of an impact, less of a footprint, and give us a chance to have more people with more views to the park. So that was the other discussion that we had is that, that this development, which right now, most, the South Hillside Lot, which we call Lot 4, and the Norak Hillside Lots, which we call Lots 1 through 3, those are almost all 100% impervious today with the warehouse on them that's about 24 feet high, that's only a couple of feet off of the property line from the west side, and then the paved parking lot on Lot 4 on South Hillside. So, so, you know, our goals here were to provide a mixed-use housing development with some commercial, and we needed some parking. We are under the normal parking requirements that the UVO requires for most developments, but it's our hope that the people that live here are going to use the Beeline Trail to walk to work. This certainly isn't student housing. You know, this is, we're hoping people that'll work downtown and, and others that want to retire or live next to the park in an affordable setting. But we did need to, to keep the commercial, let's say, to make it something that will work, because really, the park from November through March is a pretty inactive place because of cold weather, snow, ice, all of that. If any commercial is going to go here, they're going to need some parking to keep that alive so that, that people hopefully will find this, that maybe they'll walk here in the summer and decide they want to drive and visit something in the, in the winter. So we've, we've tried to add parking in the Lot 4 on South Hillside, two levels of it, because we already have 30 spaces in that building that are taken through other agreements. Mr. Shreve, with his building to the north, his portion of the building, has 20 spaces under a long-term lease that, that we have to abide by. And then the two buildings, which are multifamily buildings to the west of Lot 4, the tall, the taller building, there's 10 spaces leased to them to use as well. Those aren't single-family homes, those are more apartments or kind of, I'll say, larger than, than a single-family home. So they have 10 spaces there. So we have 30 of our spaces already leased in our garage, and because we're built into a hillside, we can use the, the natural grade to have two different levels of entry into a parking garage that will have no ramps in it, so we can try to get the most amount of spaces to not only have the 30 spaces that are leased, but also have some spaces for those that live on the floors above and have some spaces for the commercial use that we hope we'll see on the north side of, of the street of Hillside there. That's what our plaza is, where we've kind of curved the building to kind of open that to the park. A couple of other things that I'll, that I'll finish with, and then I'll also add, Mr. Tom Brennan, the owner of, of this part of the site, is on this call, and Jeff Faneau, our civil engineer, is also here to answer questions as well. What I would end with is that we tried to make this as green as we can. I don't think we've seen a PUD proposal that's taken a site that is already almost 100% impervious, and we're trying to cut it back to at least 80% all the way on, on each lot, as well as coming forth with something with standards set so high for our LEED certifications for all these buildings, as well as a site that is in our city next to plenty of transportation hubs and our largest new transportation spine, which is the Beeline Trail. So it just makes sense that this is a site for density and a site to enjoy the park and, and, and a site that is set back from the 10 homes along our west side, about 130 feet. Right now, we have a building that's two feet off the property line, and, and these buildings, from at least what we've measured, are going to be 130 feet from the nearest other structure. So it is our hope that, that you find everything that we've done here to your liking and, and that we can at least listen to, to the parts maybe that you don't like or don't agree with, and we can try to, to come up with something that will work for everybody and make this a nice complement to the park and a housing development in the city that'll have plenty of affordable housing units in it as well. So with that, I thank you, and just will be here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Bruce. All right. Do my colleagues have questions, either for the petitioner or for staff? Yes, Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes, first I want to say thank you to Mr. Groelik and Mr. Bruce for their presentations. It was very interesting. I have a number of questions. I'll ask one or two now. Just to, to be perfectly clear, the, the non-townhome buildings, will they be apartment buildings or will they be condos?
Am I still unmuted?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, oh, good, good, okay. You didn't hear me, okay.
No, I didn't hear you say anything untoward.
Not that I would have.
No, of course not.
Um, no, so it is our intention right now that those buildings will be apartments, and then that the, that the townhomes, the 19 townhomes will be condominiums. They will be put together with zero lot lines between the units, so those will be units that could be sold and will be town, for the, for the townhomes.
Will there be a single condo association for all the townhomes, or will each one be a separate association?
You know, we, we haven't gotten that far down the road. I mean, we really, when we went for the Plan Commission, the, the initial thing that, that we were trying to bring forward was that we were trying to amend the existing PUD to allow residential on this site. And we've kind of gone down this path where we are now, and to a great deal, it's taken a couple of years and a lot of time and expense. I, I would imagine, just based on what I know on others, that it'll probably be a HOA that will be put together by the owners of, or that will be put together, but it'll be run by the owners of those units.
No, that's the whole idea. The question is, will it be three or four different HOAs or one big HOA?
I would say that it'll be, the HOA will be for that lot, if you, because that is Lot 1. Only, the Lot 1 is the portion where the townhomes are, Lot 2 is the, there's a south building from that, and Lot 3. So those are individual lots. So I would imagine-
I'm, I'm losing track here. I'm, I'm looking by buildings rather than lots. I mean, I'm, I, I can't have every image on the screen at one time, so I'm having trouble going back and forth. I just know there's four townhome buildings, right?
That's right, and those will probably be on, those are on one lot.
Via single HOA, yeah, okay. Let's see. The other question I have, and a lot of my questions stem from this, is what do the owners envision that the street address for these properties will be?
That's a good question.
Does it have to be Hillside Drive, or can the street address literally be, you know, something South Beeline Trail, since, since you're putting the front doors on the trail?
Honestly, Steve, what we would probably look to, you know, we wouldn't maybe give everything Hillside Drive addressed, but call that parking lot, give that a street name just for addressing purposes.
Well, it's, in other words, the, the kind of alley-like parking lot that's going to go behind these buildings, you would give it a street name.
Yes.
So it would be peculiar, because clearly the front doors are facing the Beeline Trail, you know, so- You know, so I've got more questions, but I'll follow up. I want, I want, I just wanted to put that out there for people to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? Questions? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, I, I have a bunch. So I'll just kind of jump in somewhere too. And thank you again, the, Mr. Grulick and the petitioner for your presentation so far and answering our questions. I guess I'll ask about the affordable units first. It looks like fifteen percent of, of the units in both the apartment buildings and townhomes, I think, were mentioned as being reserved for affordable units. Does the petitioner or, or staff know what percent of AMI those will, those will be at this point?
So they would need to follow the requirements in the UDO, which state that these would have to be for people making less than one hundred and twenty percent of the area of median income.
Okay. And related to that, there's a, a portion of the UDO that provides a number of, of guidelines and requirements, actually, when we're looking at PUDs and whether or not they should be approved. And let me, let me see if I can pull up the right spot here. One of those is looking at the affordability. And it, and it says that it needs to go above and beyond what the incentives in the affordable housing incentives are by some amount. I think it's either ten percent more units or ten percent lower AMI than the UDO incentives and for affordable housing incentives include. Am I mistaking my understanding of that or has that been discussed?
Yeah, so that, that section is certainly dealing with the establishment of new PUDs. So certainly you guys are aware, there's Thompson PUDs and existing PUDs. So for amendments, for some of the amendments that we have taken to existing PUDs, we have just kind of looked at what the minimum threshold is and tried to make improvements on those. You know, a lot of PUDs, you know, they talk about accomplishing mixed use within the PUD, you know, elevated standards for sustainable design, affordable housing. So with existing PUDs, sometimes that can be very difficult to accomplish all of those ga, all of those things with an amendment to just one portion of it. You know, for instance, with the Habitat for Humanity Amendment that we did within the Thompson PUD just a little bit ago, we use this, this same standard here. And again, you know, while that petition itself wasn't a mixed use, you know, it was an improvement within the PUD. So we just use the section that I just referenced regarding the fifteen percent. So the section that you looked at, Councilmember Flaherty, would absolutely be something we would look at when we are establishing a brand-new PUD.
Okay, so the rezoning to planned unit development section of the UDO, it's staff's opinion that that applies to the development of a new PUD. I'm sorry, I might have said, whatever, a new PUD as opposed to an update or amendment to an existing PUD.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll stop there for now, thanks.
All right, other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thanks. This is going back to the sidewalk on Hillside Drive that is getting squeezed in. I'm sorry if I missed more details on that. But can you talk about kind of really like what that looks like? Is it smaller than it should be? What width should it be? How long is it smaller? And like exactly why does it have to be smaller?
So the current standard within the Unified Development Orange, or more specifically, the Transportation Plan, calls out for six-foot sidewalks within the community. And then, you know, a minimum seven-foot tree plot. So, you know, those are situations where we're dealing with a brand-new street. We've got all of the right-of-way that the Transportation Plan calls out that we need. So in situations where we're dealing with an existing situation, and especially in this case here, where we're dealing with an off-site improvement that is not within the petitioner's control, you know, we, we try to balance, you know, the tree plot width, the sidewalk width as best as possible. So establishing a five-foot tree plot, five-foot sidewalk, you know, kind of gives us a minimum space for a tree plot, gives us a minimum space for a sidewalk, so we accomplish both of those goals.
Okay, sorry. So we're doing, this, this is proposing five and five. The code says six and seven. So you're missing three feet of space there. Is that right?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, and that's because the, the, do you call it the stub is too small? That's not, is that right?
Well, so the, the right of, the existing right-of-way along Hillside Drive from this property to Roger Street is very narrow. Hillside Drive is not centered in that. So it's, it's, it's become, it's, it's very difficult. You know, a lot of times when you've got a built-out neighborhood, when you've got a street that's not in the middle of the right-of-way, you've got right-of-way that's less than what would be required to squeeze in everything. So, and, and again, you know, like I mentioned, because this is an off-site improvement, you know, the petitioner can't go by right-of-way from these adjacent property owners to, you know, get all of the required standards met. So we're, we're trying to squeeze in what we can, get the pedestrian connection. You know, that's the first priority. And then try to make sure that we've got a, a good tree plot, that we can get trees in there and that meets at least hopefully the minimum five-foot side, or tree plot width.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and take a turn with questions. The Building Seven, the one south of Hillside Drive, which has that easement, I'm wondering about what it's going to look like for pedestrians walking by it. I know downtown, we, we require parking garages, first-floor parking garages to have, you know, some kind of interest for pedestrians, you know, art or some kind of decorative surface covering or something like that. Could you speak to what is planned for this building? Well, I guess, Mr. Grulick, if you could start by what's required and then maybe the petitioner could talk about what's planned to make this attractive from a ground level.
So one thing that's important to note here, and so this, hopefully you should be able to see the aerial of this Building Seven site with a red box around the petitioner's portion. So there is another property that the Parks Department owns that's approximately forty feet, fifty feet wide, that separates this lot from the Switchyard Park. So ordinarily, you know, if, if, you know, for instance, if you looked at all of the buildings to the north of this that we were just talking about, that are right on the Switchyard Park, you know, obviously there's a high degree of interest and desire and need for those sides of the buildings that are directly on the trail to have pedestrian accessibility, to have great architecture. But because this property is set back a substantial distance from the trail with these other properties between this and the trail, you know, we, we were understanding, I guess, a little bit of the decrease in pedestrian orientation and view along the east side of the building. Certainly, if, if the council feels that there is additional elements that needed to be added to that, you know, that's still something that we can discuss. But since there were these other properties between this and the trail, you know, it made that a little bit more difficult. They do still need to meet all of these standards that are in the zoning code for pedestrian entrance along a street. But because this section of the property doesn't front on the trail, those wouldn't come and apply because they're separate. It's separated by these other properties. Does that answer questions?
So you had sent me some details from the UDO on primary pedestrian entrances, but that wouldn't apply to the east side of this building?
Correct.
Okay. I wonder if the petitioner can speak at all to what the design of this might look like to people passing by?
Sure. First, again, you know, our, 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 what we've had to be cognizant of is that there could be a paved road in front of this that's an easement to the warehouse building to the south of us. So initially, Eric and I, planning and the client, and the, the owner here had discussed trying to do, and again, until that easement, until something gets paved there, it'll certainly be, you know, a landscaped area. Minimal landscaping, because it'll all, at one point, could be, may be removed for this easement. Now, they would have to go forth and, and have this easement approved. So it would go before Plan Commission, I, I believe, or Planning would have a review on it. But in the beginning, we won't just leave the asphalt that's there now, that's in the parking lot. We would remove that asphalt and we would landscape that area with at least lawns and, and some shrubs, probably not any trees. But that part of the building, again, because we have that, the city lot, that's a wooded lot between us and the Beeline, we're not really interacting with the Beeline there. And, and we really, that part of the building isn't designed, it, it's almost designed like a side yard. It's not designed as a, as a front door. Now, we did have discussions at the Plan Commission level that our north facade, that's the facade facing Hillside Drive, that we worked a little more in trying to provide a focus on the entry to the building, entry to the parking garage. And so from the first Plan Commission meeting till the final meeting and approval, we changed the design of the building, added a glass storefront and made an attractive entry. Hello, kitty. And, and we still have two entrances. Now, again, part of our, our, you know, as I say, this, this, while this comes off as a five-story building, and I'll get to that in a second, it really, half of the first story is going to be built into grade. So as you come downhillside, you're kind of walking downhill. So part of the parking garage along Hillside will be, will be below grade. And part of it, one, one level of it will be at grade. So that's why this, this wasn't a two-story parking garage sticking out of the ground. It, it just, we were working with grade here to try to bury a level of it. But along the north side, I think we've upgraded the facade and made a pedestrian entry. Again, there's no commercial in this building. So the only people it'll be using are people that are parking here and, and people that will be living in the building. And as far as that goes, I spoke with, with Eric just the other day. And we haven't had time to make this change. But after the last Plan Commission meeting, we started looking at the four plans. We started, you know, when we went before the Plan Commission, we went forward on this particular site with a request for a hundred percent impervious because we only had, we have a warehouse to the south of us, a city-owned tree plot to the east of us, Hillside Drive to the north, and then two multifamily buildings currently to the west of us. So, so we, we were trying to get a larger structure here with more units. But as we left the Plan Commission meeting and they asked us to step back our fifth story, as I looked through maybe of trying to plan out how that would affect our units and what that would look like and, and all the issues that we had with the Plan Commission on the height of this building, what we've decided to do is go ahead and take the fifth floor off. So it is not a four-and-a-half story, it is a four-story. So it'll have two stories of parking, partially below grade, and then two stories of residential. And the building, if you look at that drawing, I think Eric had up a minute ago, is kind of a U-shaped building towards the park at the two residential stories so that we can get some views from those two stories of units out towards the park. So instead of a massive, solid block of a building with an interior court, we tried to open it up. Now, we lost some units doing that. But I think it's a better building and it breaks up. It almost makes the building look like two buildings from the park. So I hope that answers your question and then some.
Yes, indeed, it does. Thank you. Other questions from committee members? Councilmember Bowlin?
Thank you. So I'm trying to understand the practical parking ratio collectively on this project. So if I understand correctly, there's thirty spaces that are obligated to be placed here with an off-site agreement with Storage Express. Is that right?
Yes. Well, twenty, twenty with Storage Express and ten with, that are leased to the multifamily buildings to the west of this building.
Okay, so if we subtract that thirty, I mean, this, we're assuming there, how many spaces are, what's, what's the actual ratio of, I mean, who, who are the spaces remaining for? Just the one building that they're in or all the buildings on the site or somewhere in between?
So that's, that's what I brought up earlier is that those spaces will be a mix of people that live in this building and also for the people that are, that are using the commercial spaces to the building to the nor, on the other side of Hillside. Where we have Plaza, we're going to have some commercial space. We don't have enough parking along the west side where we have, where we're showing our parking. We're not providing enough parking for, I mean, at our ratios for what we consider more than the residents that are going to live there.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at is what, what are your goals for, for parking? When you say enough, you know, like, I'd like to be more specific. In other words, you know, like, who is going to manage the parking for residents? Are they reserved for residents? Or can the parking for residents also be used by customers? Like, how are you thinking about the usage of this parking?
In, within this building or the surface portion? All of it.
All of it.
All of it. You know, that's, that's going to be a, a, a good discussion because, again, it's, it's our hope that, because we're going to provide more covered bicycle parking throughout this site than is normally required, is our hope that people will live here because they want to walk somewhere and that they won't have a car. But again, we all know on the rainiest of all days, that's not necessarily true. Even the most diehard of cyclists end up in a car. Maybe not all.
I, I, I don't know that we, we know that entirely. But more importantly, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, like, what can I do to get a reassurance that there's no more than point-five spaces per bedroom collectively in this property? Because it seems like you're close. You claim a point-five-eight ratio, but I can't quite, at least in Building Two. Or I'm not sure which, I wrote down point-five-eight in Building Two. I have to go back and look. But I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, is it possible that your overall ratio for residential parking in this project is point-five or below?
I would say it's possible, yes. I think Jeff Fanyel did our parking numbers, our ratio numbers for us. This, the only thing that throws off that number right now is that we haven't gone forward with a full set of architectural drawings designing the parking garage. So my sketches show a worst-case scenario of parking. But I know once I put in space for recycle, recyclable goods and, and bicycle parking and bring the, and more stair towers and columns, that my number is going to go down on my parking.
Okay, I mean, I, I like, I just, I'm very, very interested in the greater detail that you have for your plans for managing parking. It's not just a matter of allocating space for parking, but how it's managed is key. Will the parking be part of rent or will it be purchased separately? The, you know, this all makes a difference in what gets built. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I would say that, so our early discussions on this site were that, one, this wasn't going to be a gated community. So you weren't going to have, for like our surface lots, for instance. I mean, we're right next to the, the largest city of Bloomington Park. We know the city right across from us, you know, you, in front of this development, we are not at the largest part of the park, we're at the very north end. So we have, the city has a parking lot for the park across from us.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
So, so that, that's a benefit in one way because our initial worries were that everybody was going to come here and park to use the park. And we did not want to put gates up to keep that from happening. So what I imagine is, is that this will just be signed for residents only, for the surface lots and/or some spaces for, obviously for accessible spaces for the commercial, will have some of those surface lot spots. The garage won't be, I don't imagine the garage will be a gated garage because, again, we, we've got to try to find a way to make the commercial spaces, the tenants viable. You know.
Look, I just, I want to say, to save you some trouble here, I endorse the idea of shareability of your parking. In other words, that you want commercial customers to be using the same parking that residents would. I totally endorse that. I totally endorse that and I, you know, congratulate you on thinking that way. It's more a matter of, is there a management plan? How are you thinking about the parking and is there anything we can do to make sure that, uh? Because I mean, there's also going to be disputes at some point, like, will residents park too often in the park parking lot? Will park users park in your residence parking lot? Like, how it gets managed is, uh, but I, I agree that, uh, gates may not be necessary if you've got effective towing. You know, and, uh, patrol of your, of your lot. So, but I mean, the, the more detailed plan about how you're going to manage parking, I think is crucial here, so.
Got it.
I mean, I'll follow up with comments, but thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, other questions? Councilmember Flaherty.
Can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Now you're muted. Oh.
All right, now let's go on to somebody else and we'll get back to Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Rosenberg, did you have other questions?
You know, I had a lot on parking as well, and I think it has pretty much been covered. Oh, I have a question. Can you, can we know, I have not watched the plan commission meeting, so I'm just curious as to why one person voted against this at plan commission. I think it was a seven one vote.
Uh, to be honest, I, I really don't have a great answer for that. We didn't have any comments with that vote to kind of give us an idea of the thinking behind that commission member. So I, I don't, I don't have an answer on that. Uh, it was Plan Commissioner Herrera, uh, he did not give any comments, I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty, let's see if we can hear you.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, very good.
When I have too many things running on my computer on occasion, the audio freaks out on Zoom. I think this question's for Mr. Grulick. Obviously, we're going through a U D O mapping process right now. And my understanding, based on some of our past conversations with planning staff, is that most PUDs in the city are being, uh, brought into alignment with some zoning code or zoning district in the new U D O. And I'm kind of wondering, uh, why not rezone this PUD to mixed use neighborhood scale or mixed use medium scale? Obviously, that comes with some different requirements than than what the proposed PUD zoning rules are here. But can you kind of tell me why, if, if that was considered and and why or why not? And why that wasn't considered to be a, a good option? Was it strictly because what the petitioner wanted to do with the property? Or was, did staff feel like a PUD update or amendment was a better approach here? Walk me through that if you would.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we did have the Thompson PUD on our list of one of the prospective PUDs to rezone to a current zoning district. Uh, I believe the final guidance from the administration was that they wanted to leave this a PUD. So we went with that guidance from the administration.
Okay, I'll ask a, a related follow up. And I guess to me, that has some bearing on, um, I'm gonna have to think more about this and ask some questions of our council attorneys and, and staff probably. But to your earlier comment about PUD amendments having sort of a different standard than a new PUD when, when we're considering them. I, I think the fact that this could be rezoned to an existing zoning district in the, in the U D O has some bearing on that to me. Because if we're gonna update the PUD, amend it to be kind of functionally a new PUD or a new zoning district. But there's another alternative, which is to rezone it to mixed use neighborhood scale or mixed use medium scale. I, I, I think I would tend to think of the, the PUD amendment a little bit more in, in the context of, of section 20.06.070 in the, in the U D O that, that dictates how we consider planned unit developments. And that's just kind of a comment, I guess, but I think relevant maybe to, to some of my questions related to this. It seemed like one of the bigger shifts is that mixed use medium scale, for instance, requires a max impervious surface percentage of 60%. Here we have 80% at least in a number of, on a number of the lots. I think there's probably a number of implications to that. Things I can think of are drainage, heat island effects. And, and also what the existing use is, I mean, since it is, you know, almost 100% impervious right now, as the petitioner noted. So what is staff's opinion about why 80% is acceptable here when it would not be acceptable in similar zoning districts in the U D O? And is that mitigated in any way by a park nearby or green roofs? Like, if you could speak to more to that question and the percent impervious surface?
Yep, so, so one of the things, so certainly one of the things that you, you just mentioned was the proximity of this to a large, the largest park within the community. So certainly on every single given property, um, you know, we want them to meet those requirements of the impervious surface coverage. You know, with this type of development, we were looking for a higher, and our guidance that we had been given from the comprehensive, or not the comprehensive plan, but the consultant's plan that was devised for this looked for a higher density, more urban style, almost a downtown style development on this property to maximize density. Um, and the proximity of this to neighborhood park kind of helps offset some of those impervious surface reductions that the petitioner was requesting. So, you know, the, the intent of the minimum landscaped area, one is to give open space on a piece of property. Provide landscaping opportunities, um, you know, given this is right next to a park, you've got that open space immediately adjacent to this. You've got that landscaping immediately adjacent to this. So the plan commission felt that the requested reductions for the minimum landscaped area were appropriate, given the style of development that the petitioner was trying to accomplish here, uh, that was in keeping with the, uh, the plan, the consultant's plan that was kind of drawn up for this piece of property. So that's, that is certainly one, one of the major reasons why the plan commission was supportive of the reductions for the minimum landscaped area.
And just to clarify, the consultant's plan, that was just an internal document functionally that the administration commissioned, right? It's not part of any adopted.
Correct, that was not an adopted plan.
And if, if perhaps the petitioner could speak to the same issue about impervious surface at all. I, I think, I believe there was some sort of mention of, uh, the possibility of green roofs in, in describing some of the lead certifications and or sustainability features. Uh, I don't know if there's more information they have on that at this time. Or how it would affect drainage on the property, that's maybe something that, that Mr. Fanyo or, or that they've looked at.
Sure, I mean, I could, I could add part of it, at least for the, the lead part is, is that, you know, lead isn't, isn't any one thing. It's a, it's a whole bunch of, obviously, you're familiar with it, a bunch of different ways to gain points. I don't envision that this, this, that all of these buildings, certainly not the townhomes, are going to have a live roof on them. But these will certainly be roofs that will reduce heat island effect. If we can, uh, it would be nice, again, to gain points and do, uh, live roofs on the multifamily type buildings. Certainly, the building on lot four is going to be a little more adaptive to that because I'm thinking that that, that space on top of the parking, the second floor of the parking garage, that the two residential units or, or floors look out into could be something because it's kind of U shaped. So I, I think that's going to happen, um, I hope. Again, I can't guarantee what point someone is going to pick on, depending on how this gets developed. I would also say as far as drainage, what we've thought of and what you see in the middle of this site is kind of, I'll say, a rain garden, but an area to take and all of our, uh, stormwater drainage and take it to the middle of this site in an area that we can either hold on to it or reuse it in some way. So we've tried to provide an area, we, we didn't want to put an obstacle in that space. So we call it a rain garden because I want to be able to reserve it to use for something to catch our drainage. So it's our hope that that'll happen. Again, I think we're, we're, we're taking a site that's almost 100% impervious and trying to reduce that number. And, and again, as Eric had mentioned, that the idea was, is it because we were next to this large green space that we didn't need to be, uh, held to the same standard as places where they're, they may not have anything near them that are, uh, uh, you know, the, the, the kind of impervious surface, we were bringing something from 100, we weren't making it worse. We're trying to bring it down almost 20%, but we were treating this like a downtown site where you're allowed 100%. But we're right next to this large green space that the city has, uh, that allows us to take advantage of that. That this is where we really were trying to put some density in for that, there's going to be a bit of a cost. If we could remove more of the parking, you know, that number might go down to 70. But at this point, we need to make sure that the units are, are viable. I mean, it's our hope, everybody will ride a bike, but I, I just don't, I don't think that's going to be something that we can hang our hats on.
So I also wanted to just kind of quickly point out, you know, that's, that's one of the, the important aspects of a planned unit development. Uh, you know, is the plan commission, the city council gets to weigh, you know, what are the requested deviations from the zoning code requirements versus the site plan that is being proposed and does that all make sense? You know, so in a given situation, if this was a straight zoning district, um, you know, if it was a straight zoning district, we wouldn't be able to get the lead afforded, or the, the lead, uh, standards for these prospective buildings. We wouldn't get the affordable housing, uh, commitment with this. So the PUD gives the plan commission, the city council, the discretion to say, does this site plan work, uh, in accordance with the requested deviations? You know, does this further the community's goals, the goals of the comprehensive plan? So that's, that's where the PUD process gives more flexibility for, uh, you know, these site plans to deviate from the code if we feel like it makes sense and accomplishes what we're looking to achieve.
Thanks.
All right, um, I wanted to follow up on that with Mr. Grulick. The affordable housing incentives are not just for PUDs. I mean, the portion that is being implemented here with 15% at 120 AMI, that's the tier one incentive. That's to get greater density, that's for any multifamily development, isn't that right?
Correct, however, you know, with, with PUDs, we've discussed, you know, this is kind of the minimum expectation for them to come forward is to provide the affordable housing with an incentive section as a base guideline minimum.
Okay. All right, um, if my colleagues don't mind, I, it's, uh, 6:34 and we have one other petition to consider tonight. And so I'd like to go to public comment and then we can loop back around. And of course, we can have a second hearing on this matter as well. So let's go to public comment. Could, uh, the members of the public who would like to comment on this petition, could you please raise your hand in Zoom? Using the, the raise hand function?
So I, I did have one request in chat from Jefferson Shreve. And so I'm, I, um, believe that he is able to unmute himself now?
So we only have three people to speak on this?
That's right.
As far as we can tell, okay. Well, then it'll be five minutes each or up to five minutes each. And, uh, Mr. Shreve, if you'd like to go ahead and state your name for the record and then you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My name's Jefferson Shreve and, and I, I am the owner of the Storage Express property to the north. I'm happy to join by video if, if, if you wish to enable that, however you want, or you want to handle that. We haven't heard from petitioner directly tonight. I, I characterize myself at this point as a remonstrator, as the owner of the property to the north and the, uh, the leaseholder of the parking spaces to the south. So I'm an interested party. I have followed along with this petition as it has made its way through the system. I appreciate your wrestling with this complicated, layered petition, both at council and previously at two, two, two meetings of the Plan Commission. It was not an easy case to advance from Plan Commission to, uh, to, to Councilmember Rosenberg's question. I, I have attempted to advance my concerns at each of these public hearings. I've attempted to advance my concerns in email traffic with petitioner's representatives, Doug Bruce, who is so capable at this sort of work, as well as, uh, Jeff Fanyel, as well as, uh, Mr. Grulick and Planning. But I've not done a very good job. Uh, I thought this evening I would, I would ask for some professional help. And I don't mean, uh, counsel, but, 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 but legal counsel in, in the form of Mike McBride, who represents Storage Express. And so if I could defer to, uh, my time to Mike McBride to try to distill those reservations that I have with the petition before us tonight, I would appreciate, and I really appreciate your consideration of some of the things that I think we all want to consider toward getting this right because it's a high visibility project. It's important to you as it is to me. My company is headquartered 1,000 feet north of this location. And if I could, uh, offer my time to Mr. McBride, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, we'll, we'll treat Mr. McBride's as a, a second, uh, member of public making comments, so he will have five minutes.
You should be able to unmute.
Sure, I did, I was actually going to share my screen as well, but I, I think it's blocking me from that. I appreciate the committee and council members' time and everyone else's time here today. My client, Storage Express Holdings, which is owned by Jefferson, who just spoke, they're located just north of this development and.
Sorry, Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Did, you had slides that would help explain your position, is that right?
Um, I didn't, but I actually could share something that could help explain my position. And it would be part of the what's before the land use committee, if I can share my screen.
Ms. Lacy, can we enable that for him?
I believe so. I believe he should be able to share his screen now.
Okay, go ahead.
So if, can my cursor be seen here?
Yes.
Okay, so Storage Express is located right above here to the north. It is this property that it's along Grimes. And then you have, it's at 301 Grimes. And then you have a property here that is 301 Hillside. And then you have another property here that is 300 Hillside. And so what we have here is a petition involving two properties owned by the petitioner. And my clients greatly impacted by what's being proposed on actually both of these properties. The first part is for unit number seven, which is the southern part on 300 Hillside. And we've had a lot of comments to the east about this, how there's an easement across the east side of this property for the building to the south. But there's also a lease agreement that's on the west side of the property that my client is the less see. And so there are 20, 20 spaces to the southwest of that parking lot that there are 35 years left on a lease agreement. Those 20 spaces probably make up just, it's a rough estimate by me looking at the map on the lease agreement, but probably about 20 to 25%. It's under 25%, but it looks to be a little over 20% of the total property. And there's egress and ingress rights over the west side of that property out to Hillside to get to those spaces. On top of that, um, if you can see, and I can scroll down, this is a unique spot where across 301 Hillside and 301 Grimes, we have a single building. And so what we don't have, um, before us and what we haven't been told yet is what happens with dividing that building? And there are just so many multiple concerns with the division of the building. We have something that has the same roofing system, water lines, um, electricity potentially. What, what problems are we going to run into and where can it actually be divided? And will that affect the plans that are currently being proposed? And so we think that there are a couple of issues that remain unresolved with development. And while we're looking at potentially doing, you know, a change in use so this can become, uh, residential property in this area. And that's ultimately what is potentially being considered. This is a unique situation where a lot of, um, weight has been given to the current proposal of plans and requirements to abide by those plans. And so it would be our position with the great impact that's going to be on Storage Holdings Express that a couple of those things be resolved because with the current easement and the. that a couple of those things be resolved because with the current easement and the current lease agreement on the unit seven property, there are going to be issues with that even being developed from the get go as currently planned. And then with the division of the property, we think it would be better served if before deciding what the setbacks were and what the property and the building location is that's closest to there and how it may impact the whole development as currently planned. If there are some issues that are worked out with, what is it going to take to divide these two properties? Can it be done? Where can it be cut? What walls need to be come up, need to come up and work through some of those issues as well. So we wanted to come here and kind of express some of those issues that we're seeing and hope that, I mean, our opposition to the current petition is based on trying to work through those remaining things before the petition is passed. So those are all ready to go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McBride. If you could unshare.
Yes, thank you. Really appreciate everyone's time.
Sure. Next, it looks like we have Ms. Cox Ash.
That is correct. And then just one side note. Andrew Gunther would also like to speak. He, he sent a message in the chat that I didn't see prior to thinking there were only three.
Okay, well, we'll go to him after.
Yes.
I believe it's Elizabeth Ash on this.
And the screen name is Paul Ash, and I believe they should be able to unmute themselves now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We, Paul Ash and Elizabeth Cox Ash share a computer, so it's, it's me speaking. Okay, I want to address something that the residents who will be impacted by this strongly. First of all, the impervious surface. We all know water flows downhill. And yes, there's a rain garden and I've seen it on their site. But unless they have some sort of grading to keep, to have that flow that way, I'm afraid a lot of the water runoff is going to go in the backyards of the residents. Number one. Number two. The traffic issues along Hillside and on South Madison. Those roads are only two cars wide. And all of these parking spaces, the cars will be coming and going. And they will be exiting on Grimes and exiting on South Rogers. I see massive traffic issues that will affect this whole area. Number three. The sheer massing of these units, because these units really hover, I mean, they, they look like scar skyscrapers compared to the little one bedroom and possibly two bedroom homes along Madison and Hillside. And anyone looking out of those flats, whether it be the affordable, whether it be the rental, whether it be the townhomes, they can see in the backyard in those houses if they have the windows open. It's going to severely impact those residents in that, in those areas. So I just think for 3.7 acres, we have far too many units crammed in. And it's just, it, it, and furthermore, anyone walking along the B line is going to see this four and five story high building. It's huge. And remember the B line, the whole park is, I think, 60% in a flood zone. So a lot of water is going to be affected there. The last thing I want to bring up is the petitioner has brought up about commercial spaces. Considering I have already addressed about the possible traffic issues, how will goods be brought in and, and, and service those commercial areas? Because it's a good two blocks away from Rogers and two or three blocks away from Grimes. I can't imagine trucks driving down there, parking and then unloading for these commercial areas. I just, I just see this as a huge disaster. It's far too dense for this area.
Infrastructure?
Infrastructure as well. It's, our infrastructure is already, we've already been blowing out sewer lines and water lines. What is this going to do to that? I just really feel this is far too dense for this area. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Cox Ash. Mr. Gunther would be next.
Believe he should be able to unmute himself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you to the committee for the ability to speak this evening. My name's Andrew Gunther. I am Chair of the Bloomington Environmental Commission and here to speak on behalf of our membership. When this PUD is being considered by the Plan Commission, I spoke vehemently against it specifically due to its lack of green space and overabundance of impervious surface. Unfortunately, the Plan Commission voted positively recommend this petition to the city council, potentially due to some bad logic. And I'm here to correct that, that record today. This proposal on how it treats green space is unacceptable to the environmental commission. And for that reason, I'm here to strongly recommend denial of this petition on behalf of our membership. We understand, of course, that PUDs are meant to be unique in their standards and creation. However, it has been the longstanding view of the environmental commission that environmental standards and regulations should not be reduced to make the planning process easier, nor should citywide plans be thrown out the window on any single first, this specific petition goes against the recommendations of multiple citywide plans initiatives that call for increased green space, including but not limited to the 2018 Comprehensive Plan, the Bloomington Environmental Action Plan, the Sustainable Action Plan, Bloomington Municipal Code, and the soon to be published Climate Action Plan. These plans all call for increased, not reduced, green space as an essential part of climate change mitigation. The Comprehensive Plan of 2018 has in it policy 3.2.1, which says, quote, "Continue to limit the amount of impervious surface in new development," end quote, as well as policy 3.2.2, which reads, quote, "Increase overall green space and protect environmentally sensitive areas," end quote. The Bloomington Environmental Action Plan of 2016 states that since 1993, Bloomington has lost 24% of its green space to the tune of over 2,000 acres. Between 2007 and 2011, due in part to the advocacy of my fellow commissioners, Bloomington regained nine acres of green space. These gains are important as the Environmental Action Plan calls for increasing green space and green infrastructure to mitigate the impacts of climate change such as flooding. The Sustainable Action Plan by the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability has goal 7.1, which includes increasing green space. The Sustainable Action Plan also states that, quote, "The Bloomington community will also emphasize the importance of green space and habitat connectivity in its development decisions," end quote. And the soon to be published Climate Action Plan by the city has an entire section dedicated to green space with goal G1 being to, quote, "Increase quantity and quality of green spaces in the community," end quote. Meanwhile, Bloomington Municipal Code 12.24.000 calls for the city to, quote, "Maintain and increase tree canopy within the city," end quote. While 20.05.070 states that, quote, "Parking areas shall be designed to, quote, 'conform to the applicable parking requirements and provide for the optimum number of parking spaces while maintaining design standards and preserving green space," end quote. And of course, the Unified Development Ordinance of 2019 has an impervious surface maximum of 60%, whereas petitioners are calling for 80%. Not only do all these city codes, policies and plans oppose the petitioner's request for increased impervious surface, but the petition before you does not have any unique or high standard environmental attributes that would cause the environmental commission to make concessions on our requirements for approval. During the Plan Commission meeting on this petition, there are some misconceptions that I want to rectify now. Firstly, the petitioner stated that the current site plan is 99 to 100% impervious surface, and thus their site plan is an improvement. While the existing site does not conform with the UDO, neither does the petitioner's proposal. We should be cautious about how we think about development. Poor past development should not excuse mistakes in modern development. This will be a major development along both the B line and Switchyard Park. We should hold these developments to the highest standard in order to set a good precedent for future development of the area. Second, the petitioner states that they probably have the highest level of lead design for any recent PUDs in Bloomington. This is blatantly incorrect. The level of lead design met by the petitioners is by far the most commonly designated for PUDs that come before the environmental commission. This project is not special in that way. Additionally, to my knowledge, the PUD is on, the petitioner has only committed to lead certification for the commercial portions of their buildings. The conditions for approval by the Plan Commission state that the townhome sections will only be designed to lead standards, but will not receive certification. How does the city intend to ensure that the residential sections are actually designed as the petitioner has committed? And finally, the petitioner and planning staff claim that since they are building next to a large green space, they do not need to build green space in their site plan. The environmental commission believes this is a short sighted view. Proximity to Switchyard Park may very well not be enough on its own to fight heat island index mitigation and habitat connectivity or adequate drainage, especially considering the site's proximity to floodplains. Additionally, we believe not abiding by the limits set in the UDO for impervious surface now sets a bad precedent for the rest of the development around Switchyard Park. There must be a balance between green space and density. We do not need to find that balance. The community and the city council found that balance to be 60% when they passed the UDO. We urge you to reject this petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on this petition?
I believe Tom Brennan would like to comment.
Well, he is the petitioner, I believe.
He is, but he's asked, he's asked me to unmute him.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The petitioner has the privilege to speak during the normal course of, I mean, he doesn't need to speak here after we're done public comment. He can speak. I mean, we don't, he doesn't need to be limited to the five minute public comment.
Well, it was my impression that, that the petitioner's statement had already, the petitioner's statement period had already passed. But if there's nobody else in public comment, I think we could go ahead and let Mr. Brennan speak now. Is that right, Ms. Lacy? There's nobody else?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you very much. My name is Tom Brennan. I'm basically, I would say a lifelong resident of Bloomington. I've had a number of businesses that I've started and, and, and run for periods of time, so on and so forth. And, and this, this project is something entirely new to me. As I simply got myself involved in that warehouse building because I had a a packaging business that I needed some extra space for. And I ended up buying the entire building, the 150,000 square feet back in 2004. The evolution of the property has been really quite remarkable in many, many ways. When I first bought it, there were, there were trains going by and it was a real pleasure to be able to wave at the engineer and enjoy, enjoy the railroad. Being a little bit of a railroad buff myself, I suppose. But as things have evolved, the B line trail was a major a ma, a major factor in what is actually happening now. And when the B line was originally built, it was, it was interesting because people took a new interest in, in, in renting space in my building, particularly some, you know, tech companies, home healthcare businesses, just a variety of different things. A CrossFit operation was put in and so we had a real variety of things happening there. But beyond that, I'm not a developer. I find that as we go through life, we find ourselves in new situations that we try to adapt to and make the best out of them. And, and this is quite a process, I must say. And, and I do appreciate everybody's concerns. I think it's important that that all points of view be aired and, and, and we've adapted on any, on any number of occasions to a large number of these concerns that I believe have generally been addressed and, and and beyond that, I did want to speak just briefly about the the specific concern with the separation of the two buildings. And I call it two buildings because it currently is two distinct properties. The only thing that we really share together is a, a common roof that they are to the north, Storage Express, they are responsible for their portion of that roof and maintaining it to a degree that it's impervious. And we, of course, are responsible for ours. We also share a limited amount of structural integrity that consists of four large columns that support the roof structure of both buildings. Our intent going forward would simply be in terms of preserving the, the integrity of, of Storage Express's portion of, of the building, of their building, would be to go ahead and on, on my side of the property line, these four columns support the roof structure. We would ultimately anticipate deeding an extra foot, about 12 inches on the south side of of that, that party wall that goes between the two structures. And then go ahead with maintaining those columns, which would support their roof. And we would assure that the structural elements of, of their roof and, and building essentially would be entirely preserved. We would also anticipate, since the facade of the south end of their building would be facing our proposed development, we would want to make that something that's very attractive to the people that that would be potentially living in, in this new development. So I, I hope that that will alleviate a little of the concerns that that Jefferson Shreve has and, and his counsel. Beyond that, I, I think that Jeff Faniel is going to have some comments regarding some traffic and, and also elevations and drainage and things like that. But I just want to say one thing that I, I think is important for the, the, the council to know and, and I think the general public as well. And that is that when I bought the building, we essentially had, over time, thousands of semi trucks coming and going to the property, to the building, to the loading docks and so on and so forth. And, and we've never had any real, real issues. I mean, I don't ever believe anybody's ever complained about all the trucks coming and going. And if I suppose we have a delivery truck coming in and dropping off some you know, food items or whatever to one of the commercial elements of this development, it will be probably very minimal. But, but anyway, beyond that, I'd like to let Jeff Faniel go ahead and speak if he's interested in picking it up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Faniel, since we did have some questions about separating the two parts of the warehouse and questions about drainage, it would be great if you could address those two items at this point.
I'm not a structural engineer, so I can't get into specific details of separating a building, but I believe when the permits were issued to divide the building into two parcels, they would have had to met the building code for separation. And so they'd be considered as two separate structures by the, what used to be called the Administrative Building Council. Doug, can you tell me what it is now? So in what is entirely feasible to separate the buildings, as Tom just mentioned, there might be some electrical work to be done. There might be some plumbing to be done, but those are things that would be worked out. But those are things that would be worked out if and when this is approved. It's not that, it, it exists as two buildings now legally and it, the only difference will be is the separation. Regarding drains is brought up, saying, well, we're going to flood, possibly flood the backyards to the people to the west if we don't grade the property right. Well, we will be grading the property right. Currently, that building sits elevated and it's an obstruction for water flowing from west to east. That obstruction will be removed when the building's gone and we'll be able to accommodate the flow to the east, towards the, our property into bio swales and then, then discharge into an existing swale that runs parallel to the Beeline Trail. The stormwater runoff is going to be, actually be reducing the runoff because there's less impervious surface area. We will be filtering the water and improving the water quality that leaves the site. There was mention about, at Plan Commission as well as tonight, about the sanitary sewer in the area blowing up. The, the city utilities just spent somewhere around $10 million improving the sanitary sewer in, in the Switchyard Park area, increasing its capacity and reducing, or I guess eliminating, the sanitary sewer overflows that have been experienced in that area. So that should not be an issue anymore. We did a turning, a traffic turning analysis so that we can get emergency vehicles, fire trucks and other trucks into the site. And they are able to maneuver and make deliveries to the commercial areas. And we, because of the, the square footages of the commercial areas are rather small, we don't anticipate a great deal of that traffic occurring. I believe that I'm, I've covered the issues that deal with the civil part of things. There has been talk that, that we need to increase the amount of, increase the amount of pervious area. And right now, we're nearly 100% and we're going down to 80%. We are increasing it. This area has been told to us, we instructed to us, that we ought to be looking at this as a more dense, more urban project similar to downtown, which has higher impervious surface areas. And if we did rezone this, straight rezone, we might be looking at one of those downtown zones to get the type of development we were asked to put on this property. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fanyo. Well, it is now 7:04 and we do have one other petition to hear this evening. Would my colleagues be averse to just moving to comment and then picking up with questions again at our next meeting? Councilmember Volan?
I have one quick question. What is the current height of the warehouse that exists on this property?
This is Tom Brennan. I, I can answer that.
Go ahead.
It's on the west side, the, the roof line slopes from the west to the east. And the west side is approximately 25 feet high and it slopes down to the east where the elevation is probably 22 feet next to the trail.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other urgent questions from my colleagues before we move to comment? Okay, so I'm ready for comments or, and/or a motion? Yes, Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, I think we should definitely send this to a second meeting of the committee. I think there's still some outstanding questions that I'd like to be able to ask, but trying to be mindful of time. I asked about the height of the building because it does sort of point out that the neighbors to the west have a legitimate concern about the increase in height overlooking their neighborhood. I am sympathetic to this idea. I used to live in a house that was below grade and I did have that fishbowl feeling of being seen by everybody going by. Having said that, I'm not sure that that's a reason to, you know, not build a residential project. But I would like to, to think more about that. And, but in general, I have some, you know, like narrow and broad questions. I keep wondering what is the, what was the goal of eliminating PUDs when this one is being kept? When the administration is not trying to eliminate all the PUDs? Because it, it sort of implies that the PUD for Brownstone Terrace was a bad thing because it was student housing and this is a good thing because it's not. But we would have had more control over student housing if we had left it as a PUD, we would have gotten a bus line out of it and then some, like we did with the PUD at Motel 6. So I'm curious about that in general from the administration as far as this project goes. You know, I, I do have a minor concern about the naming, like I, I would like the alley behind the building, if, if this gets approved, to be treated as much like a real street as possible, up to and including giving it a name. I think that while entrances directly facing Hillside can remain 30301 West Hillside, if they, you know, were to name the street behind it Beeline Alley and give it a north-south, like South Beeline Alley, you know, that would make more sense from a visceral standpoint of where is the person living? Where does a pizza driver go to deliver pizza and so on? The, I've got a lot of thoughts here. I'm really concerned about parking. I don't have enough information yet about how the 0.58 ratio was calculated. I understand that there's pre-existing parking agreements that the developer wants to, to retain. That's fine, especially considering that that's that much less parking that might be built off-site somewhere else. But as far as new parking or parking dedicated to the residents or the, the commercial entities on this property, shareability is, is, is of paramount importance. And I definitely believe that that number should be below 0.5. If it's already that way, then I'd like to see that demonstrated. Let's see, other questions I wanted to get answered in the next couple of weeks. The, some of the balconies that were shown to us, they look like sort of faux-French balconies. And I wasn't, I couldn't tell whether they were actually usable balconies or just sort of, you know, will, will, will they actually be opened and used by people? That's one thing I wanted to find out about. The, the large building seven, I can't quite, it feels, it looks like a castle. It looks like, the first thing I thought of was it seemed like the Indiana Memorial Union, high up on a, on a, on a hill, very distant. And so I wondered, you know, like, I, I couldn't quite tell what the ground floor, I mean, it just looks like a big sidewalk or patio or something that's undifferentiated. This brings me to a more general thing, which is that there were few close-up views of the west side of the proposed buildings. You know, that's the side that the neighborhood's going to have to look at, the people who live in those houses already to the west. All we saw were the facades to the east, how the, they would, you know, appear on the Beeline Trail. And I really feel a development this big should be showing us a 360-degree view of all the buildings that they propose to build. So I, I, I expect to see renderings as detailed on the, for the west side. Like what is it going to look like for people who are living in the building, who drive up and park in the building if they're using their car? You know, what is the, the detail of the facade that faces Hillside on, you know, building six and seven? And finally, I would say, I mean, I for one have had enough of drone views of properties. It's, it was mentioned earlier that, but what's it going to be looking like, looking like for a pedestrian walking by? That should be a required part of every project that we see because the vast majority of people will experience buildings from the ground as pedestrian looking up at it, not as a, a bird's eye view. So I would really like to see that kind of rendering too in, in a couple of weeks. And, you know, like I just think every project should be presented that way. If I have further questions, I can send them via email, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council member comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure. Yeah, thank you again to the petitioner and staff and public for commenting and presenting. I, I have a number of questions I'll be following up with via email as well, some clarifications on things that we've already discussed and some new things that I didn't get to. Also have some following up I want to do with, with council staff about how we should think about the UDO standard for rezoning planned unit developments in the context of a, a PUD amendment. I, we've heard some comment, you know, some comments from the petitioner and from staff about how this is better than what's there now. But let's, you know, assume the hypothetical that this is rezoned to mixed-use neighborhood scale. Presumably, it would still redevelop at some point and it would have to meet those standards, which in some respects are, you know, depending on your perspective, better. So definitely something I want to think more about. So a few possible reasonable conditions that, that related to some of these concerns that I think we could consider and would like to get feedback from the petitioner on. And again, we'll follow up via writing about those, so hopefully we can discuss and have those ahead of our next committee meeting. One small thing, I, it's a little disappointing to me that the townhomes don't connect directly, each one, to the Beeline in the form of like a sidewalk or, or, or path in, in a similar way to the houses that are south of, south of Hopscotch and across from Cardinal Spirits. Each, each and every one of those has a, their individual path from their front door to the Beeline. And I think if we're trying to encourage that as a front and encourage interaction with the Beeline, it would be better to have each individual unit of the, each individual townhome that actually fronts on the Beeline have its own path. If there's concerns about, you know, privacy and, and security and that sort of thing, I think a small gate, just like the units that exist south of Hopscotch would, would make sense. But I think that will help to make this development, the townhomes in particular, really feel like they are fronting on the Beeline and not like it's just sort of a cursory or kind of afterthought in that regard. I wonder, I, I share concerns about the street, the, the new two-way street behind, that's, you know, sort of like a parking lot with a drive. I just can't think of any real existing streets where we have, you know, perpendicular parking all the way down on both sides. It's just, it, it just screams parking lot, of course, and which is largely what it is. But if we're trying to make this a street, if there's an idea that it might extend to the north, you know, if, if the other warehouse property redevelops at some point in the future. And I wonder if having angled parking or even back-end angled parking all along that might be a better option to something else I'd like to explore. And, and just again, kind of more, you know, high-level considerations. I understand that, you know, the, there's been a push from the administration to kind of consider this more like a downtown development or something. But again, to my knowledge, that's not actually in any adopted plan. It's, it's just sort of the, the direction they would like to take it. So that comes with trade-offs, as we've heard, and maybe they're worth it and, and I think we need to keep thinking about it. But I, I don't think we actually have explicit guidance saying that should be the case. And, and I'd certainly welcome staffer to, to correct me on that. Again, and following up via email if I'm misunderstanding, but I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you again to all who spoke tonight and I'll be following up soon.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. I'll just say briefly, I, I think the other council members have touched on everything. I have bulleted here in my notes and I think it sounds good to send this to a second committee meeting. Thanks.
All right, and I'll just add a few things. I, I walked the area last weekend and, you know, kind of peering from Madison Street through, between the houses where you can see that the warehouse currently, right on their back property line, it's, it, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for anybody who lives there, but it would seem to me that it's going to be more appealing and attractive to have some green space, some parking and 60 feet from your back property line to the new multifamily housing. So I know that the multifamily housing is, you know, taller than the warehouse, but it's also 60 feet from the property line and probably about 80 feet at least from the buildings on Madison Street. So we need to keep that in mind. So I'm a little torn on this as far as the impervious surface. I, I agree with the environmental commission that we shouldn't make exceptions to the standards. Then again, I, I also see that we have a developer who's trying to undertake a huge kind of revitalization project of kind of a post-industrial space and they need to also make their figures add up and, and, you know, have a certain number of units. So I would normally just side with the environmental argument every time, but I'll, I am going to be thinking about that and, and seeing, you know, kind of weighing that with the benefits of having more people and a variety of housing types close to where people play, work, and live so that, you know, less vehicle miles will be traveled by automobile. That's also an environmental benefit. I agree with a lot of the, the questions that my colleagues still have. You know, I want some clarification on lead certification for the, the townhome buildings. I want to, to know how much, how many feet of separation between building seven and the houses to the west. I'd also like to get more information on parking ratios, as Councilmember Volan mentioned. But I also see a lot of good, good aspects to this plan, so look forward to talking more about this at our next meeting. So I think we need a motion to pour this to a second committee discussion.
So moved to the meeting of March 24th.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that this petition-
A meeting on March 24th.
Pardon me?
To a meeting on March 24th.
That ordinance 2107 be moved to a second hearing by this committee on March 24th. And so I'll just go down the row here. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Volan? Are you still there? We lost him. Let's see if Councilmember Volan comes back to vote on this motion. I can vote yes in the meantime. Well, in the interest of time, I think we have a majority to send this to a second hearing. So we will do that and I think the petitioner, oh, Councilmember Volan, would you like to vote on the motion? Councilmember Volan, would you like to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, very good. 4-0 to have a second hearing on March 24th. And my thanks to the petitioner and to the staff who spoke to this as well as members of the public. Moving on, we have ordinance 2108. A rezone, very southern end of City of Bloomington, city limits, Fullerton Pike. And I believe, is it Mr. Gerlick again? Yes, it is. Take it away.
Thank you. So this is a request from Bill Brown for a property that is at 3100 West Fullerton Pike. This is on the very far southern outskirts of the city where I-69 and Fullerton Pike meet. So the petitioner is requesting to rezone this property. It's approximately 87 acres from a planned unit development to the mixed-use corridor. So this site, it's zone as a planned unit development. It was rezoned to a planned unit development in the mid-'80s, mostly for industrial uses. Received a final plan approval for an assisted care facility in the late '90s. And then another PUD amendment in the late '90s for a golf course. None of those were inevitably built. Petition site has kind of sat empty for a long time. Petition site has kind of sat empty for a long time. In 2015, they came forward with a site plan approval in order to allow for some of the site to be graded and the dirt sold to NDOT as part of the I-69 construction. So as part of that approval, the site was analyzed for tree canopy required preservation, riparian buffer preservation, cars feature preservation. And so all of that area was set aside and the areas outside of that area were graded for the selling of that topsoil. So you can see in the aerial photograph, you know, the area was cleared and graded was what was free and clear. And what was set aside or not disturbing that area was set aside in easements. So the petitioner is requesting to rezone this to the mixed use corridor district in order to allow for increased marketability for the, for the site. So during the course of the planning commission hearings, the petitioner did come forward to try to address some of the concerns of staff and the planning commission regarding some of the possible uses within the mixed use corridor district. And they proposed to record a voluntary zoning commitment that would exclude certain uses that are permitted uses in the mixed use corridor. So those would be the nine or 10 uses that you see on the screen in front of you now. So they proposed to exclude those from the list of uses. So I do have a slide or two here outlining the, the list of uses for the two prospective zoning districts, the mixed use corridor, the mixed use employment district. This should also have been included in your packet as well. So this slide here, I did strike through those nine or 10 uses that they are proposing to exclude. That would include sexually oriented businesses, bed and breakfast, big box retails, vehicle fleet operations. So some of the uses that we really found were, were not desirable. The petitioner is kind of stricken off from their, from their proposal. So of course, with, with any request for rezoning, we analyze this based on the comprehensive plan. So this is a slide here showing the comprehensive plane designation for this area as employment. So the employment district, as you can see here, stretches along, for the most part, along this section of I-69. So it extends all the way from Fullerton Pike all the way up to Tap Road and then further north. So other areas within this area have been developed with the Southern Indiana Medical Park. And then of course you have on the north side of Tap Road, you've got the Hoosier Energy Office Park. Southern Indiana Medical Park is certainly a large office park. The areas around that were approved for other office park uses. So one of the, the things that we certainly wanted to point out and that are important to point out from the comprehensive plan that deal with the employment center is the preservation and the use of this area for employment uses. So the employment district is different from the mixed use corridor district in a lot of ways. You know, we want to try to preserve and use those areas for employment uses. While there certainly are uses, there is some overlap. You know, when you go through and look at the use list comparison for the lists for the uses in the mixed use corridor and the uses in the mixed use employment, you certainly see a lot of overlap. You see uses that do occur in both districts. And certainly while there be some of the uses within the mixed use corridor, you know, are not or are not high employment generating uses. You know, some of our concerns with including those uses that are in the mixed use corridor is that they detract from the availability of that land and the likelihood that other office park uses or other employment uses will go in there. So, you know, as you have restaurants coming, as you have retail, you know, they'll slowly kind of eat away at the amount of land that is available for a large entity to come in. You know, whether it's something like Southern Indiana Physicians, Hoosier Energy, you know, a lot, sometimes those uses just need large amounts of land. So when those uses come in there, they kind of take away from the availability of that land to be used for some of those larger uses. So this area, this particular property, you know, as you can see here on the aerial photograph, as well as the comprehensive plan is very unique in its location. It is directly on I-69. So that provides a very easily accessible property, not just for residents of Bloomington, but residents of the nearby area within the region. The immediate access to the Fullerton Pike exit on I-69 provides a great opportunity for employment uses to draw from surrounding communities as well as within the community of Bloomington. And so it's important to preserve the land within our community for employment uses. We certainly have a wide amount of land available for commercial uses. You know, that is, that is not in short supply. Large tracts of land for employment uses is in short supply. So it's very essential that we preserve land designated for those uses, especially at this location. You know, as well as we're concerned with setting a precedent for other land that is designated as employment, that's zoned as mixed use employment for petitioners to come forward to rezone for mixed use commercial corridors. So we're certainly concerned with setting that precedent as well. The mixed use corridor, you know, and the purpose, it states that those are areas that are directly on arterial and collector roads. This property is not easily accessible from the internal streets from the community within Bloomington. Fullerton Pike, you know, will possibly, could possibly connect to adjacent roads in the future. However, right now it's very isolated. So that location does provide a great opportunity to serve the region for employment uses and not necessarily commercial uses that could go in here, such as big box retail or other restaurants. We are looking at possible amendments to the list of uses within the mixed use employment district that would allow for possibly a larger sized restaurant, could allow for medium scale retail to serve other uses within there. So we're looking at making amendments that will hopefully be coming to the planning commission, the council to make some slight adjustments for the list of uses for the mixed use employment. However, playing commission and staff did not feel that it was appropriate to rezone this to the mixed use corridor district. So the, the playing commission had a wide range of opinions on this particular site. They certainly felt a lot of sympathy towards trying to increase the list of uses to give better marketability and possible redevelopment for this piece of property. However, they also saw the conflict with rezoning this to something that does not coincide with our comprehensive plan. So with that being said, they were not able to come to a consensus vote for either a positive or favorable recommendation. So they did vote to forward this to you with no recommendation with the hopes that conversations would continue to happen on this property at the council level. And so that is, that is how it left the playing commission. So with that, I'm happy to answer any question.
Thanks, Mr. Gerlick. Do we have somebody on behalf of the petitioner to speak at this point? I saw Mr. Carmen. Yes. Mr. Carmen, go ahead.
Thank you. Several things to talk about and a couple of comments, I guess I won't get out of the way, and I don't mean these to be disparaging. But I have to note that as with, I see Eric's discussion about I-69, the importance of this being at that location to be a matter of great irony because in all honesty, for those of you who lived through it, if the city had had its way, this would not be I-69. It would still be State Route 37. And yet, because it did get through as I-69, now that has become a length pin of the argument to leave this stagnant. Because that's what it is. This PUD has been out there for 35 years, 35 years. Now you heard about a couple of amendments, attempts to do various things to get some development going on it that didn't pan out. But Mr. Brown has had this property available. If I may do a share, you share screen for a moment. I want to show you Eric's chart that he just showed you with some additional information on it. Get this done if it allows that. And I'll try and enlarge as I know on share screen, sometimes the documents come through as very small. But this is the comparison there, it had it pulled from the table of uses. The uses permitted in the MC zone and the ME zone for comparison. I'm gonna, don't want to spend a lot of time doing this. I'm going to kind of go through this a little bit quickly. But every, if you look at the ME column there, the one to the right, I've highlighted every line item in the ME zone that has a use in it and then carried that highlighter to the left on the MC zone. And what you see is we go down through here, as you notice, everything that's permitted in the ME zone, a couple of them being conditional uses opposed to permitted, those couple of minor changes. But otherwise, everything that's allowed in the ME zone is allowed in the MC zone. Except you have one here, the light manufacturing, and as you go clear to the end, you have the wind energy. Not a, not a use that's going to happen at this site. So this is not a question of what is lost from going with MC compared to the ME because everything that's MC is still there. It's still there as a permitted use or at least a conditional use in the MC zone, except the light manufacturing. In the packet that, that staff provided is the PUD and the list of permitted uses from the, in the PUD. And in those permitted uses, the vast majority of what you would classify as light manufacturing uses have been permitted uses for 35 years and it has not happened. Now, we can say that I-69 changes the playing field on that, but I guess I'll disagree with that. Because until I-69 happened, what you had with I, with State Road 37 at Fullerton Pike was, at least for the time, an arterial road, the best highway in the area at a good intersection. All those, those attractions we'd say that I-69 interchange would bring to this site to make it developable already existed to the extent that, you know, essentially state of the art with what you had with State Road 37 in Fullerton. And it still was not enough. I mean, and there's some additional problems with, with leaving this stagnant, which is what I think the MZ, ME zone does. Because this, what is not visible on the, what you saw on these slides, I think it's in one of the photographs on the staff packet. But this property is targeted for a road bisecting the property south to north. The roundabout that's on Fullerton Pike now would be the connection point. But basically there's a road that is planned and essentially required to go through here, north to south that bisects the property. That road, at least as the ordinance was seen to read now and as staff would, I think will tell you, is targeted to be built when this property is subdivided. This is an 87 acre parcel. It's not going to develop as 87 acres. It's going to be subdivided at some point to allow smaller lot development by whatever user comes in, which will trigger a road construction issue. The, the cost estimate I have from, from local engineer for the cost of that road is $2.6 million. There is no employment based use that's going to come to this property, that's going to build and buy enough acres that can support a $2.7 million or $2.6 million construction obligation. There's no single user that's going to do that. It's not happened in 35 years. It's not going to happen in, in the next 35 years. I wish I could say more positive that it would, but it's sad. I mean, the, the development of property these days, and we don't know yet the full impact of the pandemic and what that has changed in the, in the employment environment, the development environment. But we're going to see by all reports from anybody I've talked to and that will weigh in on the subject, smaller developments, not the large, not 200 employee developments is going to be the five and 10 and 15, maybe get 30, maybe get really lucky and get up to 50 type developments. They're not going to be buying 40 and 50 acres to develop. It's going to be smaller ones. And you cannot put in a $2.6 million road by having one user come in who's willing to build a site of 10, of 15,000 square feet and employ 20 people. They will not pay enough for the lot. They will, it will not generate enough income for Mr. Brown to now say, okay, I'll invest $2.6 million in putting a road in. And that's the particular sore point because this is a TIF. This area is a TIF, a Fulton Pike TIF. And in, in the years it's been a TIF, the whole reason we create TIFs is to try to, to find a means to fund infrastructure as a spur or as a, as an inducement for development of the surrounding area. You pay that the, the bond for the infrastructure project out of the increase in property taxes that's generated through the development of the area in reliance on that infrastructure. That TIF is not going to get used out here. We know that. It's, it hasn't happened to date. It's now part of the consolidated TIF statistic the city did a few years ago. It's the money, that money is going to switchyard park. It's going to trade district. It's not going to go on a road out there. It hasn't happened to date. It's not going to happen going forward. And so we're, we're looking at, at as far as we can tell right now, as much as I object to it, private money to put in, put in this road to bisect the property and expect to be able to fund that out of minor development. And it's just not possible. The request for the MC zone is, as Eric characterized it, flexibility, increased flexibility and marketability. The opportunity that to spur development out to activity out there with some, some of the commercial uses allowed in the MC zone that would help get that infrastructure paid for, help get it put in the ground, which would make the ground more marketable, more likely to develop even for the, the employment based uses is, is, is just a length pin in getting this property developed. The, I guess we would disagree with staff's characterization that the ME zones are, are employment type uses and the MC is not. As you go down the list of uses, there's a great many of those. They may be classified as business or commercial, but they are employment type uses. Even the table that starts to still there, if we're still on the share screen, under employment uses, you can see food production and processing, judicial use in both zones, manufacturing arts in both zones, contractors yard permitted in both zones, distribution centers permitted in both zones. It's only the limited light manufacturing uses. When I say limited is there's, that covers a lot of things. As I said, those are the uses been permitted on this property for 35 years. So the disagreement that we have on this site is not whether a change from the PUD to a straight zone classification is appropriate. It's a dormant PUD. But what's, what is the correct zone to put on this property? The MC zone maintains the ME uses. It doesn't take them away for, with that one exception. It allows for them. And I think the concern that staff, staff is expressed that Eric commented on earlier is that the, if you allow the MC's uses, some of those things will occur and deprive the opportunity for the pure only ME uses. That may be true. That, I mean, that, some of that could occur. It likely, very likely it would occur. But the, the trade off is relegating this property to continued dormancy or trying to put some vibrancy into the development opportunity. And that vibrancy is only going to come through the, some of the additional opportunities available in the MC zone that are not available in the ME only zone. And for that reason, we still urge that the rezoning and changes zoning to, from the PUD to the MC is, should, would be approved. It's, it's important that if we're going to see this property develop and it's time for development. Mr. Brown, frankly, he's been doing this for a few decades and this is one he'd like to see done while he still can. If you don't know Mr. Brown's background, Park 37 was his, Park 48, I believe, was his, and there have been other developments. He, there, he's had a track record of responsible development of the properties he owns. It's not, and so this is just the next one. And despite the efforts for over these last 35 years, it's not been successful in getting it developed. And so we're looking for a change to allow that to happen. And the MC zone, we believe, is, is the answer to that. It will still allow employment type uses, would allow some flexibility and it would certainly increase, not guarantee, but certainly increase the prospects of seeing some reasonable development of this site in the, in the, the near future. With that in mind, and I'll wrap up here, here in just a moment if I may, but some of this, this effort to the MC zone was brought about by Mr. Brown having been contacted, been approached by a potential user. There's no contract. There's no actual commitment to do it yet, but he's been, had multiple conversations. And so it, it is sincere interest. That would be a large development, would be a training center that would, that would be, serve as a large employment site. But in all honesty, their intention to come here, if they do, is dependent in part on seeing some other development there, primarily a hotel and essentially a full service restaurant. The only restaurant that's allowed in the ME zone is limited to 2,500 square feet, a drive-through. A fast food drive-through is what 2,500 square feet gets you in a restaurant. It doesn't get you a full service sit-down dine-in restaurant. And if the training center comes, and it's not a guarantee, but it certainly has had multiple conversations. And if the training center comes, and it's not a guarantee, but it certainly has had multiple conversations. So the interest is still there. But if the training center would come there, they will be bringing in trainee students from a regional area. That's why the insistence there has to be a close proximity, preferably onsite hotel. Why the issue of the restaurant is important, that those are essential requirements for locating that type of a use there. So, and that's just one. But that is an example that why the flexibility on some other uses may be critical to finally seeing this property developed and still be developed in a responsible manner. And we submit that that, that training center, those adjacent and the uses of the hotel and a full scale restaurant, sit in, dine in, sit down restaurant are important components of that. So we come back full circle to the request that the, that this property would be rezoned for the PUD to the mixed use commercial. It's an appropriate zone for the area. It preserves intended appropriate uses, but adds some additional uses for flexibility that would appear to be essential if we're going to see this property develop. And that's, that's the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmen. If you could please unchair.
Sure. Okay, try to do that quickly.
There we go. Thank you. All right. Are there questions from committee members on 2108? Yes, Councilmember Volin. Can't hear you.
My bad. I'm trying to wrap my head around this problem. And I kind of want to hear from both staff and the petitioner on this. But like, I mean, I'm trying to grasp the issues that the plan commission wrestled with when they sent it to us. One of them was, Mr. Gruelik was the idea that if this was, if this petition was adopted, that it would encourage other properties to rezone from ME to MC. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Um, yeah, so that's, you know, kind of, that's pretty much the gist of it there. You know, we have certain land, and let me share my screen again. And I can just kind of show you what we're, what we're looking at with the overall comprehensive plan in the area that is set aside for employment uses, the portions of the city that are set aside for that. So you can see this strip area along I-69. You've got the area on the west side of 69 over, I believe that's where Sam's Club and where Park 37 is. You've got the areas along West Fountain Drive, and then the Thompson PUD. And then some of the areas around the Patterson Park, Patterson Point PUD, just to the south of, south of that where Landmark is.
When you say employment uses, can you be more specific? Are you talking about large, non-mixed use manufacturing?
No, I'm, so let me, I apologize, let me clarify. So employment center designations within the comprehensive plan. So in those areas, we've got employment center designations. You know, you've got Landmark Avenue, where you've got, you know, all of the office parks that are along there.
Sure.
You've got West Fountain Drive, where you've got a mix of kind of industrial and office park uses. Certainly, as I mentioned, as you look along I-69, along the south side, you've got Southern Indiana Medical Park, you've got the Mill Creek PUD, which is mostly industrial. So, so I guess what my point was with that is, you know, these are the very small areas, the Thompson PUD, where you've got, you know, all those uses, Best Beers, Cook, you know, large employment uses, those are the areas that we've got designated for employment.
For large employment, you mean?
Yes, employment center, you know, those types of uses. So the plan commission, their concern was, you know, by opening these areas up to the mixed use corridor designation, you know, we're kind of taking away from that and setting the precedent for some of these other places to come forward with those requests as well.
In other words, that there's a lack of unbroken land for a large, for larger employment?
Yes.
I mean, so what if, what if this were to be developed like Landmark was? I mean, it's a long street with, I mean, it's, it's not.
And it could be. But the mixed use corridor, so some of this certainly, you know, as Mr. Carmen pointed out, you know, the differences in the use list are very minor. You know, you've got some retail, you've got some restaurant uses. However, all of the areas that are designated as employment center within the comprehensive plan are zoned accordingly for that. There aren't really any mixed use corridor designations within that. So if we want to change this to mixed use corridor, then we should amend the comprehensive plan, because this designation of mixed use corridor doesn't go along with the areas that are designated as employment center in the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Carmen?
Yes.
I just, your thoughts, I mean, like, I know you've just presented, but I mean, I mean, is it really that simple? Or is there something more complicated that I'm not seeing here?
No, I'd say it's really that simple. And I would say I don't, I'm not, I didn't leave the plan commission hearing believing there was a consensus on that issue. That's why they ended up with the vote that it was. There was certainly some sentiment for that, and from more than just one, two. But, you know, the comment about precedent, and I really, I really dislike that word, even though I have to, my profession requires I consider it all the time in most of what I do.
Of course.
The problem I have with using that word in the land use in the planning realm is, it carries too much weight, disproportionate weight for what it means. The only precedent I believe that you should consider is that you, at the petition before you, you do the right thing. That's the precedent you should set every meeting, is that the petition before you gets due consideration, and you make the right decision for that petition, not out of speculative fear of what somebody else is going to ask for at some future unknown date, if it should ever happen. Because if you're making decisions based on what someone else may do someday, then you're not making the decision on the merits of what's before you, which is.
Except, Mr. Carmen, you know, every, whenever anybody developed anything downtown and they wanted extra floors on their building, like the Graduate Hotel, whenever anybody asked them, why are you asking for this? They pointed to Smallwood, which is now the Avenue One College. And that was approved in 2003 before the UDO. And it's kind of, if you make the exception, then everybody developing afterwards is going to point to the exception. So like, that's a legitimate concern. You, I don't blame you for wanting the right thing to be done, but sometimes the right thing is based on what else has been done.
Well, you know, Steve, along that line, look at the property. This, this property is required at this point, I'll tell you, I disagree with this, but at least on paper for now, this property is required to make the public commitment, to extend the public benefit of privately funding a $2.6 million public road. I personally believe that's wrong. I mean, that's, that's what we're confronted with right now. This property is being told, I think, in the push for the ME zone only, and the not, and if denying the flexibility that the MC uses do, is being told that for the public good, you can live with this another three, five years as a stagnant undeveloped piece of property. That's okay. We're going to land bank you, because I think that's what you're relegating it to. Because nothing's changing over the last 35 years. If you put this MZ ME, not a thing will have changed.
Can we, I'm sorry, Mr. Carmen.
Game changer. Yes.
Excuse me, I wanted to stay focused on, on the question.
All right, I understand that. So back to, just to wrap up on your question where we started, Mr. Volin, is, is there was certainly sentiment expressed about the concern about the comprehend plan. But if you go back to the beginning of even Eric's presentation earlier about rezonings is to give due regard to the comp plan. The comp plan is not a mandate, it's not a, it's not a template of the only thing you can do, but certainly to give due regard to it. I would submit that you can give due regard to the comp plan and consider other factors with regard to this petition and this property, and find that the rezoning to MC is still appropriate.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions from committee members? Councilmember Flaherty?
All right, thank you. I was, and thank you again to Mr. Carmen and Ms. Gruelik for your presentations. I was looking for a little clarification on some of the potential uses that Mr. Carmen offered. And in particular, first, actually, just the restaurant discussion. You know, I'm looking at the UDO as we're, as we're talking and some other things. And I just see restaurant as a permitted use for both districts. But there is an asterisk, which is a use specific standard, I believe, for ME. Could, Mr. Gruelik, could you confirm or clarify with regard to the restaurant use as allowed, as permitted in the ME zone? And what limits or differences there are on that as compared to the MC?
Yeah, certainly. So that asterisk refers to that use specific standard, which limits it to 2,500 square feet.
Okay. And do you share Mr. Carmen's view that that would most typically be a fast food restaurant? Or? Or is it?
Well, so you know, the 2,500, you know, square feet, that was trying to look at, you know, an office park that wanted to have some kind of a food establishment in there. You know, they wanted to put a Subway in a corner somewhere, or, you know, whatever kind of restaurant. You know, not something that was going to come in and develop a building on a standalone property by itself, but that was there solely to serve an existing office park to give an allowance for other restaurant uses to come in there to, you know, just create an area within an existing building. You know, not, like I said, not to have a standalone business by itself.
And what about within, like a restaurant? Restaurants are sometimes, you know, situated within hotels and motels, or hotels, I suppose. Would that be subject to the same square foot requirement, even if it's located within a hotel?
Well, without saying 100% certainty, you know, so the mixed use district has hotels as a conditional use.
Right.
But every other district where hotels are permitted use, restaurants are permitted use as well. So it wouldn't even have been a question.
So you're not sure on the fly? Is that right?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, in any district where you could have a hotel, you could have a restaurant. So, you know, we would never have to make the classification that this restaurant is only serving the hotel, so it's an accessory use. The restaurant is always a permitted use where you have a hotel. So there's no size limitation or really interpretation that we would have to make. So in this case here with the ME district, you know, we specifically called it out so we didn't have to get into this world of, you know, is this an accessory use? Oh, it's allowed, but it can't be more than 2,500 square feet.
Okay, so.
Did that answer your question, Matt?
I think so. So even, even though in other contexts, where in hotels and restaurants are both permitted uses, and it doesn't come up, in this context, ME hotels are conditional use. Let's say it was approved and a hotel was built. If a restaurant was to be situated within the hotel, it would, your interpretation is that it would still be subject to the 2,500, 2,400 square foot requirement. Is that?
Yes, that is, that is 100% correct. And that was the intent of that use specific standard.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Actually, just a quick follow up on related uses, yeah, with Mr. Carmen. You'd mentioned a training center, and I know this is all preliminary and just expressions of interest. Would that, do you believe that would be, you know, a permitted use in either ME or MC? Or is it primarily the restaurant and or conditional use of a hotel that worries you most at this point?
Well, the, the training, I believe the training center is a permitted use in the MC zone to start with. But the interest in the training center to locate here has made it clear that they would be looking for a site that would have in close proximity, a hotel and restaurant facilities, because of the nature, the trainees, the students they bring in, they're going to need lodging, they're going to have, the training center would not have a cafeteria, is not planned to have a cafeteria. That's why they're looking for a restaurant in close proximity for their students' trainees' use. Yes.
Right, but sorry, but my question was, is the training center a permitted or conditional use within the ME district? It's not.
I think, as I interpret use, it would be a permitted use in both zones.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Other questions from committee members? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. Thank you for presentation and the catch up. Okay, I guess I'm just trying to like wrap my head around it still, like, is the problem you are not getting folks interested in this as ME? And you are getting interest as MC?
Close, the, the ME uses, at least those that are being really touted as part of the ME use, are really, have been there for 35 years. The ME zone doesn't really add anything. What the MC zone adds would be the ability to, without condition, the hotel and the full service restaurant, which at least with regard to the potential training center, is an inducement or, well, has been presented essentially a requirement for them to locate there, because they want those amenities available onsite for their attendees. Just more general than the MC zone with the additional uses permitted that's not in the ME for commercial uses, will allow some more flexibility for other development that would help spur and support the infrastructure costs.
Okay, I mean, that is helpful. But I guess I'm asking if there has been interest in it?
No.
Well.
There has not been. When I say that the development's been dormant, in 2014, Duke Energy, on what they call their strategic site inventory, took a hard look at this. So planning staff, Tom Akuta, was heavily involved in putting, helping to put together a study and analysis of this property. And it was pretty favorable analysis in terms of the development potential of the property. But despite that, despite their, and they do that statewide, it, nothing came from it. A lot of time and effort went into that, and a lot of effort by the staff to help in putting together that description of the property for their study, but it did not lead to it. So there really has been very little interest at times in this property over an extended period of time. That's why we're in part looking to kickstart it through the more flexibility of some different uses, as well as trying to help do whatever we can to try to cement getting the training center there. But I do not want to misstate, overstate that. That is just conversation. It's not a commitment yet, but it's been a positive conversation, so.
Okay, thank you. If I could just do a follow up, my follow up. I mean, do you think there's no interest, because it's like a price problem? That, you know, folks need a better price to like buy into it as ME? Is that?
Well, it's not, it's in part a price problem, but indirectly, it's Mr. Brown's price problem, because he could, to develop anything out there, we have to subdivide the property, because nobody's going to take 87 acres to develop. The subdivision triggers the road. So if he has somebody come along, even if it's an ME, pure ME use, that says, we'll take 10 acres and we're going to develop this small trade offs or whatever, and employ 30 people, he can't do it. He cannot sell 10 acres and spend $2.6 million putting into the road. It's going to take multiple, we're going to have to line up either some larger uses, like the training center, or several smaller ones that can be timed to come in at the same time, because he's going to have to have that land sales to be able to justify the ability to put in that road cost. And that problem with the TIF not building the road, it's leaving it to private money is, we can't do it on selling five or 10 or 15 acres, because you can't, can't sell for enough to cover that kind of a road cost. So it takes either several, multiple smaller users or attracting a much bigger one. And even then, it doesn't make it easy, but it certainly makes it a possibility, though.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Well, I wanted to ask Mr. Garlick more about two things. First of all, the road extension requirement. And secondly, the, the TIF district. If, could you provide more information about those two items, please?
Yes, certainly. So the transportation plan does have a road being shown going through this property. So that would be required with a subdivision of the property. It's not required with site plan approval, but would be required with subdivision. This is, I believe, located in a TIF district. All of the TIF districts within the community were consolidated some time ago with the Switchyard Park. So I do believe this is located in a TIF district. How much money is in that TIF district? I don't have an answer to that.
So is it part of the consolidated TIF district, or is it separate?
Yes, all of the TIF districts within the city were consolidated into one.
Do you know if there's been any conversations about using TIF funds to fund or partially fund the road extension?
Not, not to my direct knowledge. And also, like I said, I'm not sure how much money is honestly in that TIF fund. A substantial amount of that was used for Switchyard Park.
Okay. All right, that's something I could inquire maybe with the controller about. Other questions? Other questions before we go to the public? Yes, a council member Volan.
I wanted to ask about the vote of the Plan Commission. It was six to one with no recommendation. So I guess I would say that the six voted neutrally. Essentially, they abstained. Of the two to one, were the two for or against? Was the one for or against? Can you speak at all to the voters?
I don't have that vote sheet in front of me. Some, the, the, the main gesture, the concern was that the Plan Commission did not want to send this to you with a no, with a no recommendation, recommendation. They wanted to provide some guidance to the council, whether that was positive or negative. So those two folks are the one, the two and the one that abstained. You know, the sentiment was, you know, let's, let's send at least some, some general recommendation to the council rather than nothing. So that was, the concern was just that the Plan Commission didn't, didn't want to, you know, yeah, send it to you with no recommendation.
I mean, I, I prefer to think of it as a neutral recommendation, neither positive nor negative. To characterize it as no recommendation is confusing. But I mean, they're simply neutral on this. They, they didn't have a yes or no opinion.
Yes, that's, that's, that would be, I guess, a fair way to kind of sum it up.
Would you say that the two to, I mean, so I don't understand the two to one split. So if you're saying that all three of them said that we should give some recommendation, why didn't they vote?
Because it never went to a vote. It never went, nobody made a motion to forward it with a favorable. Nobody made a motion to forward it with a non-favorable.
Got it, got it. The one is an extension, yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty, did you have additional questions?
Yeah, I think so. Trying, trying to organize them. Oh, gosh. I guess just a sort of a, a small matter. This will be, this is proposed to be rezoned to ME in the UDO mapping that has now been kicked off at the Plan Commission. Is that right, Mr. Grulick?
Yes.
Okay. And is the petitioner able, I imagine any, does it not get to this level of granularity at the, at the Plan Commission? Like, would this petitioner be able to go to Plan Commission at this point and recommend for that? Or, you know, advocate for that change? I guess they've kind of already been through the exercise, so it's a bit, a bit moot. But, but is this, would this been more appropriately considered, I guess, at that stage? You know, the UDO mapping? It's a little bit surprising to me, I guess, that it's coming to us now. Whereas unlike the, you know, petition Mr. Carmen presented a few weeks back at 446 and Third Street, where there's sort of, you know, things in progress leading to development, this is seemingly a fair bit more speculative. I'm, it, it seems like it would have been more reasonable to let the UDO mapping process take, take its course and kind of see, see where we were. But I don't know. Maybe that's all, I don't know if you have thoughts on that, Mr. Grulick, but.
Well, and I don't want to speak for the petitioner, but I think basically they, they didn't want to wait for the city process to kind of go through all of those motions. They wanted to kind of initiate this a little bit faster and get it resolved. You know, certainly this could have been discussed at the Plan Commission meetings. You know, it is, I guess, somewhat helpful to have a meeting or a hearing specifically for this site and this discussion as we can give it more time and attention. But it certainly could have also been discussed during the Plan Commission hearings as well in council for the map as a whole. But in general, they, they wanted to initiate this faster and sooner because of the uncertainty of how long it would take for the city to go through our process.
Okay. If you have something to add, Mr. Carmen, go ahead.
The only thing I'd like, Matt, in answer to your question, the petition is going to go to the Plan Commission. I think it's due March 29th, where it will be considered ordinance 10, which is all the, the map changes. They'll be at Plan Commission that night. But with regard to the staff recommendation in that petition for ME zone, that's going to go forward as a yes or no. That's not a negotiation. We would not have the opportunity, the Plan Commission would say, no, no, don't do ME, do something else instead. It's going to, Plan Commission is going to act on it as an up or down on the ME recommended that, because that's what the petition is. So that we would not have had the opportunity at that, in that venture, to even really discuss MC, other than to say, deny this petition and let us repetition it for MC. That, that had been our only option. And Eric's right, part of it was a timing issue of like wanting to get this resolved, issue resolved now. But it's also that this gets individualized attention as opposed to being lumped in with all the others, where it's going to be an up or down action, not a negotiation.
Thanks. I have another, Councilmember Pymon Smith, if, if it's okay to follow up.
Yes, go ahead.
It has to do with more, more again, with the, the road that'd be triggered by subdivision of property. Let's, let's say a training center, hotel and restaurant of some kind are, you know, they reach an agreement with the petitioner and they decide to sell some of the property and do that. Would subdividing any of the property trigger the development of the entire, the road as it covers the entire, as it winds through the 87 acre parcel right now? Or would it only be the portion that is actually developed?
Any subdivision of the land would trigger that.
The whole road?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, and I should also, I'm going to say, not, not just for the petitioner, but anybody in the public listening, you know, as part of the PUD map, there is a public comment period for any member of the public to speak about their property that is being rezoned and for the Plan Commission to have discussion. So it's not a, you know, you don't have a chance to have a say or discussion to happen during the Plan Commission process of the zoning map. Every member of the public will have an opportunity to speak on their property and any rezoning on that and comments are to be, to be heard in discussion if needed.
Okay, thank you. And so am I sort of misremembering that I feel like some other, other conversations in the context of infrastructure, maybe Adams Street and like the Thompson PUD, there's a question of how and when it, if we, if we would develop a road incrementally versus a subdivision or something leading to the whole road being built at once? Am I?
So each, each PUD has kind of been different in terms of how it deals with the installation of infrastructure within that PUD. There have been different phasing requirements, different phasing limitations. You know, most of the time with PUDs, there is a development that is coming forward that is imminent. There is a plan, a developer, and so, you know, things have kind of set in motion. You know, a great, a great example of this is the Sudbury PUD, where the PUD was established. But there wasn't a cohesive developer that was planning to come forward. It was very speculative in nature. So there were just different triggers that were set aside of, you know, which parcels could develop and which offsite improvements had to happen at which time. You know, each PUD is kind of different. You know, like Renwick, you know, there was a developer that was coming forward that had a plan for the entire thing and it was all happening at once. So they laid out all of the roads and the infrastructure, they plotted those. So each, each PUD can kind of be different.
But when it's not a PUD, when we're in a standard zoning district, any subdivision triggers the whole thing?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions from committee members before we go to the public? Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, so, but I just want to make sure, Mr. Grulick, that I have this idea down right. Mr. Carmen's concern seems to be if an individual property owner doesn't like the way the city's map is rezoning their property, because the city's map is essentially a collective rezoning of all properties at once, there's no way for one property to be amended, at least not at the council level. We have to vote the whole map up or down. So, you know, like, is that, isn't that correct?
Yes, that is correct. By the time it gets to council, the council can only vote it up or down. So it is during the Plan Commission hearings, then any objections or comments to the zoning map should be heard and discussed.
We can't hear you. Councilmember Volan.
You, you say, you talk about objections or comments, what about amendments?
So amendments can certainly happen during the Plan Commission hearings. You know, if somebody brings forward, you know, a disagreement or a recommendation, you know, the Plan Commission can consider that and make an amendment to change that one property from whatever it's being proposed to something different.
Okay, thank you.
All right, final call for questions before we go to the public. All right, let's go to the public. If anybody in the public would like to make a comment about ordinance 2108, the rezone at Fullerton Pike. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom, or you can use the chat and type a message to the meeting host. Ms. Lacy, are you seeing any?
There, not at this point.
All right, we'll give it another moment. Anybody would like to comment on ordinance 2108, the rezone of property at Fullerton Pike and I-69? Please use the raise hand function or leave a chat message for the meeting host. All right. Seeing none, we'll go back to committee members. Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, I have another question.
Yes.
Just to make sure that I understand what the question is. Because the Plan Commission did not send a positive recommendation to the council, if the council also finds itself neutral on the subject, if they don't vote affirmatively yes, then this doesn't, this petition doesn't automatically happen. It doesn't go to MC. It stays as it is because the Plan Commission had no, did not make a positive recommendation. Is that correct, Mr. Grulick?
Correct.
Okay. So basically, the council would have to vote five, minimum five votes to accept the petitioner's request in this case. The council can't really, if the council punts, also if the council, you know, for some reason doesn't have a majority in favor, it's, it doesn't, it, the property stays as it is.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It is almost 8:15 and I was hoping to wrap this up by 8:30. So unless we have, are there any other urgent questions at this point? Or can we move to committee member comments? All right, seeing no questions. We have any comments from members of the committee or a motion? Or is this particular petition just laden with inertia and nobody wants to act on it? Councilmember Volan?
I mean, I'll go first. I am as ambivalent as the Plan Commission is. I think that it's, I'm having trouble really fully grasping the ask here because it is based on a lot of conditionals. Well, like, you know, do we, how do we as a city want the property to develop? The comprehensive plan says we want it to be an employment center, whatever that means. One thing I don't understand is, you know, like exactly, I mean, this, this would be the kind of thing that where Alex Crowley's opinion would be useful. You know, if he's the Director of Economic Development, he would have an opinion here. So looking at it strictly as a planning issue may be a little inadequate. The, you know, I'm also, it also causes me to question the administration's overall sort of emphases. Like I said with the previous petition, it seems to be selective. I mean, I thought that the administration's goal was to eliminate PUDs altogether. And here, we have no compunction about eliminating a PUD, but we did before. Meanwhile, this project also says that one of the, well, this land, one of the prohibited uses is student housing. There's a very poor definition of what we mean by student housing in the UDO. It just says certain types of building, but doesn't talk about uses or why wouldn't housing or student housing be acceptable in a place like this? It's not explained. I don't understand it. So I find sort of an arbitrariness to the emphases placed on what should be a PUD and what shouldn't be, what should be an employment center and what shouldn't be. So I don't blame the Plan Commission for being ambivalent here. I'm ambivalent too. And I, meanwhile, you know, Mr. Carmen has made some very good arguments. But I don't know that it's necessarily the council's job to assist in a particular type of development. If his argument is, well, it has been built for 35 years, you know, I'm not sure that's our problem. You know, it really depends on the kind of development we want to see. You know, if we want to see more density or, or housing or whatever. But in this area next to highway, I'm a whole bunch of ambivalent and I'm not sure what to think. I mean, I would really like to hear more from entities who are not directly related to planning or the petitioner. So, you know, did we have, I don't, I don't even know if there's an environmental, I need to look at the Environmental Commission memo too. That's one thing I did not look at. So, and we, but we didn't hear from the Environmental Commission advocating either way on this, on this issue, even though they were here for the other one. So I'm eager to hear what my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Other comments from committee members? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief here. I tend to follow the comp plan. And so I, I lean toward, you know, the rezone of this to the employment that the comp plan identified. Again, I tend to just follow that. I mean, I think it goes both ways, that there are a few differences in MC and ME. I mean, if there are a few differences, then just leave it as ME. I see you want those differences to be included. So kind of goes both ways on that one. Right, it is by a highway, it's at the southern part of town. So part of me is like, I don't know what's best here. But because I am relatively indifferent, I still just lean towards following the comp plan. And I, I mean, I also think the idea of taking this back to planning during the mapping meetings is also appropriate here and Planning Commission, of course. And I mean, that's what other folks are doing with their parcels. If they want a different zone than what is planned there. So I'm kind of okay with that. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure, thanks. And my colleagues haven't mentioned yet whether they would like to go to another committee meeting or put a recommendation tonight. I don't have particularly strong feelings about that, though I don't, I don't know if there's more information we're going to get in another meeting necessarily. So perhaps we're, we're best served to make a recommendation tonight. I tend to, I think, well, I think I also find the comprehensive plan is, as, yes, it's not binding, but, but it is perhaps a pretty high hurdle to sort of overcome, to say we shouldn't be following what the comprehensive plan suggests. I remember Deputy Mayor Nysen once talked about the transportation plan as aspirational and it sort of struck me the wrong way. I was like, well, sure, technically, but I aspire to meet it. And I feel like the, most of our plans, we, we don't always do a good job of following them. So I, I also agree that we should try to. And I guess because of there's, there's so much change in context that it feels a bit premature to me to bring a rezone petition for, for MC, asserting that ME won't be adequate based on, on the past. But I, I do think I-69 has changed the context. I think we are probably looking at some level of annexation in the city's future. I don't know what that will look like. Possible, it's possible that areas adjacent to this will, will be annexed, maybe not. But that could. could affect the way transit serves this area. There's a lot of moving pieces that, that could lead to a, a different fate for this property in, in the near-ish future. Similarly, with, with waiting for the UDO mapping process, I, we've seen, we've heard a number of rezones over the last year or so that have been sort of in advance of that UDO mapping process. And mostly I've kind of treated that, that as totally acceptable because they've been in the context of developments that are ready to go. There are people trying to move forward with a particular vision and a particular development. I don't think we're really at that level here either. Regarding the use of TIF dollars and, and the construction of the road, that, that's an argument that kind of cuts both ways in that if the city is supposed to front public dollars, let's say 2.6 million or more, if we were to connect it through the parcel to the north all the way to Tap Road, let's say the city fronts 5 million, that's done, you know, we bond for that money to construct the road with the assumption that we are going to see development that will increase the, the tax, our tax base and, and pay for that bond. And of course, that's how TIFs are meant to work. And the same, the same can be said for a private developer. You front the 2.6 million with the anticipation that this will redevelop, that if you build the infrastructure, you will have more interested parties looking to develop housing or employment or various, various things. So it's, the, the argument that we're, that if you build the infrastructure, it will spur development runs both ways. That could be public investment, it could also be private investment. So I don't find necessarily completely compelling that this, this has to be a TIF-funded infrastructure. I, I think we need to be careful, you know, using TIF for all infrastructure improvement. I think there are cases where it could make sense. I'm not sure if this is one of them. And again, I'm not sure that case has been made strongly enough yet. And I think likewise, what I've heard from planning staff and discussing this issue in the past, is that they also are very careful about using TIF for, for those types of purposes. So I think all those things together, for me, kind of lean against a positive recommendation on the, on the, the proposed rezone. So if we were to take a vote tonight, that would be, my vote would be no. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I started the evening very ambivalent about this project, but the more I think about it, the more I think this is, just from its location, this is sprawl. And I would actually prefer not to see development there. I know this is very unpopular, Kenyon, because it's in a TIF, we want more tax funds. We, and of course, Mr. Brown wants a return on his investment, I understand. But really, I mean, whatever we put there, it's going to be, you know, people will have to drive to get there. And it'll probably be, you know, largely people from outside our community that use it. So I, I just, I don't see a great public benefit here, especially since it's, it's been zoned for employment for decades and has not resulted in, in employment use. So I'm, I, you know, I default to the comp plan and I'm not really inclined to, to make development on this parcel on the outskirts of the city easier. I also don't want to fund infrastructure that is just enabling sprawl development. Now, I do realize that, you know, about half or even two-thirds of the site has already been scraped, so it's not like a total green space, new development. But still, any use there is, is just going to be auto-focused as far as people getting there, and, and that's, that's not a great, great development in my view. So like other colleagues have said, I, I would default to the comp plan and then tend against this proposal. Councilmember Volan? We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. This has been an interesting discussion, and I'm glad to have heard my colleagues' opinions on it. I, I don't think the question is, I mean, this is literally not sprawl, because it's not been developed yet. It is surrounded by what was developed as sprawl back in a less enlightened zoning era. And I like to think that the comp plan and the UDO are going to make whatever development happens out here better, but the idea that somehow this won't develop, I find to be just almost an impossibility. Like, this property will develop eventually. And I don't have a particular sympathy for however long Mr. Brown has held the property. Who knows, you know, like, if, if it's, if his concern was primarily ROI, you know, like, that's just not our problem. Our problem is what kind of project gets developed out here? I like to think that whatever gets out here is going to meet a higher, less sprawly standard. I think the question is more, you know, what, what benefits a city overall? The administration is saying it's, it should be an employment center. Like, I, I still don't know what it, what it practically means. I mean, are we envisioning a, a big factory and that we're trying to keep this big chunk of land together so that a really big company can come in? And, and, I mean, not necessarily industrial per se, but corporate headquarters or something. And I just, part of me is, is trying to fight the opinion that I just don't care either way. Like, you know, we'll see what happens, but I, I still would like to hear from other interested parties. I'd like to know more about what the actual standing of our TIF fund is. Like, you know, have we committed all the money in the immediate future to, to other places in the city? You know, is there anything more specific that the administration really does want to see here over and above what the UDO and the map say is allowed? Are they, are trying to focus a particular kind of development here? Do they care if it's a particular kind of development or not? Are they, you know? I think that these questions are relevant in a situation which is so ambivalent, you know? But I, I don't want my opinion to be mistaken for sort of a, a primary concern for ROI. It's not the property developers ROI that I'm concerned about, it's the city's ROI. And the components of that ultimate calculation are unclear, I think, to a lot of us. So if we had more time, I think, you know, we could start digging into that question some more. But I'll leave it at that. I mean, I'm content with whatever the committee decides collectively. Thank you.
All right. Well, we're at three hours, so let's see if there's a motion out there we can vote on. Anybody?
Move, do pass on his recommendation for ordinance 2108.
Second. All right. So I'll just go down the, the list here. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No.
Councilmember Volan?
Abstain.
And I will vote no. All right, so we will, we will send this ordinance 2108 back to the full council with a do-pass recommendation of 013, I'm sorry.
031.
31. I always get that mixed up. 031. And I believe that concludes our business for the evening. So I want to thank the petitioners, the petitioner representative, the petitioner himself, who was also here, and Mr. Grulick from the staff. And we will see you back at the next council meeting when this will be scheduled.